So unless the meeting is stopped, you should be fine. Because I have it up on the recorder currently.
Good evening all present. It's seven o'clock. We are just having a few technical issues and we are, we should be, have, be able to resolve it shortly. Good evening everyone, commissioners, staff, and members of the public present. We apologize for the short delay. We were having some technical difficulties. We are up and running. So before we start the meeting, Chair Ralman is joining us remotely. Chair Ralman, go ahead please.
Thank you Ruth. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of the list planning commission meeting is conducted pursuant, pursuant to California Government Code Section 953 in that I chair Andrew Ralman and participating via WebEx in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act. My teleconference location has been identified in the notice for, in the agenda for this meeting. Madam Secretary, it would now be appropriate for you to conduct a roll call and to confirm certain matters for the record.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Commissioner Brissette?
Commissioner Brissette is on his way. He will be here shortly.
I will mark him as present. Vice Chair Menthe?
Present.
And Chair Ralman?
Present.
Thank you. We have four commissioners present and Commissioner Brissette is shortly, well, we shall shortly be here. Now, I would now like to request that Chair Ralman respond to the following. Chair Ralman, can you hear me well?
I can.
Have you been able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, I have.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that, such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
I would now like to ask that any member of the planning commission speak up at this time if such commissioner has not been able to clearly hear Chair Ralman. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all commissioners present have indicated that they were able to hear Chair Ralman clearly. I would next request that any commissioner speak up at this time if such commissioner has any reason to believe based on voice recognition or otherwise that the person representing himself to be Chair Ralman is not truly so. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that no commissioner has expressed doubt that Chair Ralman is a person participating by teleconference with commissioners present. I would now like to advise the commissioners that any and all motions and votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting are required to be taken by roll call, and I will call each name and wait for response to the vote from each member. Chair Ralman would like to add the following request for the record.
Thank you madam. I would also, due to my remote location and connection, I would like to request that Vice Chair Menthe chair this planning commission meeting. He is aware of this and has accepted the role. Vice Chair Menthe, we can proceed with the meeting.
Thank you Chair Ralman. So, meeting has been called to order. It's time for the pledge of allegiance. But I'll stand and face the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, to the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Vice Chair, if I may, I'd just like to make note that Commissioner Brissette has arrived in the chamber.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, we do Vice Chair. We have eight.
Okay, three minutes please.
Okay, I will read the first five. So you are prepared and ready to come up or to speak if you're virtual. We have Steve Segal, Andrew Flores, Michael Josephson, Paul Vowell, and Chris Pack. I will now call Steve Segal. Steve?
These are for matters not on the agenda.
That is correct. Yes, virtual.
Can you hear me okay? I can't hear you.
Yes, go ahead please.
Great, thank you very much because I could not hear you. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. This is regarding the general plan and land use notice for the area between Alenda and Sepulvede on the south side of Culver. So I represent 26 residents here on this side of the street, all the way in this stretch, and I live here that I surveyed about.
Mr. Segal, I'm going to interrupt you here. This is for comments, for items not on the agenda. That'll be on the agenda shortly. That is.
Oh, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't.
So.
Okay, I wasn't sure because this is a specific item. So sure, if you'd like me to wait, no problem. I wasn't sure. Okay, I'll hold on and wait.
We'll call you back then at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Flores. Andrew Flores is not registered virtually and he appears to not be here. I can skip him and go back at the end of the meeting.
That's fine.
Our next speaker is Michael Josephson. Michael Josephson? He is not registered virtually or he is not present. Our next speaker is Paul Vowell. Paul Vowell? Not present. Our next five speakers are Chris Pack, Celeste Lear, Judy Sherman, Richard Zingerman, and Suzanne Stulting. I will now call Chris Pack. Oh, thank you. Our next speaker is Celeste Lear. She is not present. Our next speaker is Judy Sherman. Okay. Our next speaker is Richard Zingerman.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead please.
Oh, hi. This is Dr. Richard Zingerman, 5950 Canterbury Drive. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'm speaking, this was a topic that was on the last month's meeting, so I hope it's okay. I think I'm speaking on this one because I don't think it's on the agenda. On the mixed-use development for 5700 Hannah. There are a couple of points I'd like to reiterate. There were some really good points that were made in that meeting, and I think a lot of the public felt that the commission, maybe they heard us physically, but they really didn't take into account any of our considerations. And I kind of want to highlight that because we're all supposed to kind of get along as a neighborhood. So that some of the key things expressed that there was not enough parking. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. There was not enough parking, that one parking place per bedroom wasn't enough because a lot of one bedrooms have two people. That's one issue. Secondly, we're very concerned about the additional traffic in the area, especially we don't agree that weekend construction is a good thing. There are a lot of soccer moms, a lot of soccer dads, a lot of baseball kids that play there Saturday and Sunday morning, and construction would take, would really be a detriment to their participation in those key physical fitness activities that we all try and encourage for our children and building our community. Also, you know, we thought that, we really don't like that Fox Hills seems to be taking the brunt of all the dense housing requirements. That's really not very fair on us because there's another development I think you guys are going to be speaking about either tonight or in a month. And there's, so we're really concerned about all this extra development. Also, the building is not really in the character of the neighborhood at all. We're kind of like a small, kind of almost like nice little hidden community. It just, it just really doesn't fit at all. And finally, you know, on the elevator after the meeting, some of the people that made testimony were on the same elevator as some of the council members, and some council members really said some very unkind things, like, oh, we got them on that, or they didn't, they didn't, you know, we, comments like, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Jackson Brissette said, even though we didn't want this project and we want a lot of changes, he said, I think this is the project what Fox Hills absolutely needs. I don't think that was very understanding to our needs. And also someone else said, kind of really in a condescending manner, well, I believe it was, it was either Darrell Menthe or staff, Mark Munzer, I'm not sure which, said change is difficult. You know, really in a condescending way, we don't appreciate that. We really want to try and get along, but we really felt like we weren't preferred on any of our points. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Stulting. No, we need you to come to a microphone, please.
I'm here for Chris Pack right now. So we have, in our neighborhood, we are in the Hayden tract. There is a few businesses who just got recently notice of an exhibition that is dealing with the Palestine-Israel conflict, and we were not notified, and it has been due to Chris Pack actually, who was going from one door to the next informing us tenants about what's happening. And apparently, this exhibition has provoked a lot of protests in New York with arrests even, and, so here's my support sitting next to me here. So this comes very late to our knowledge, and we were just wondering what is possible from the city side to do. They were getting back to us today suggesting some more fencing around. They have two police officers from CCPD, which is not exactly a lot for, for an exhibition that has pulled like day-long protests in New York with like masses of people. Yeah, so. You want to add something? Yeah, I allow.
I'm a neighbor business.
Excuse me, are we, are we signed up for?
I am not, and so I want to hold myself, we're just neighbors.
Appreciate that, but we're going to take the ones on the agenda, on the, sorry, who are signed up?
Yes.
Are you, you finished your comment ma'am?
Yeah, and in addition to that, they were proposing some more fencing than what they have already done. But they're also, with that proposed fence that would block a fire road, which would potentially be helpful actually in case of protests, plus it's a residential neighborhood. There are businesses affected that, that have, that include schools, a kids gym, small businesses, commercial business, like, I don't know how many businesses are affected, but it's at least eight, nine, 10 businesses that are affected by this exhibition. Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Do we have any additional speakers?
We have one additional speaker. Our next speaker is Nick Maurillo. Nick Maurillo? He is not here and we do not see him signed up virtually. That is the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you. No more public comment for items on the agenda? Can I get a, we've received some correspondence, right? I do believe we've received correspondence.
Right, we just need to have a motion.
Right, that's, I wanted to know if we had any before I asked for the motion.
Yes, we did.
Having, may I have a motion to?
I would move to.
Yes, we're doing this orally, that's right.
Yeah. Is that right? Yeah, I'd move to receive and file correspondence.
Can I have a second please? Can I have a second oral? Yes, thank you. Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter. How do you vote Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chair Menthe?
Aye.
Chair Ralman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
So we have our consent calendar. The one item, item C1, which are approval of the draft planning vision meeting minutes for July 10, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved, in a second?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter. How do you vote Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chair Menthe?
Aye.
Chair Ralman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Our next item on the agenda is public hearing PH1. Is a consideration of general plan amendment known as General Plan 24, 2045 zoning code map and text amendments together known as zoning code update and environmental impact report. May I have a motion to open the public hearing? I'll all speak up at once. So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion to open the public hearing in a second.
What motion?
Commissioner Jones.
Okay, thank you. And second, Carter?
Commissioner Carter.
Great, thank you. How do you vote Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chair Menthe?
Aye.
Chair Ralman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
I believe we have a staff report, that's correct.
Yes, thank you Vice Chair. Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the planning commission, as well as members of the, of the public present tonight, both in person and online. My name is Mark Munzer, and I have the great pleasure of serving as the Culver City Planning and Development Director. As we begin our presentation this evening on General Plan 2045 and zoning code update, I'd like to begin with some acknowledgements. First and most importantly, I'd like to thank the Culver City community for your active engagement in this planning process over the last five years. As I will discuss during this presentation, there have been literally hundreds of events and meetings over the course of the general plan process and engagement with many residents and businesses. It is our hope that as we move through this final review process with both the planning commission and with the city council on August 26th, that all parties remain engaged as we begin our next set of long-range planning activities, which include new specific plans for both Fox Hills and the Hayden tract. I'd also like to publicly thank the city council and the planning commission for your direction and for your questions and comments as we create more opportunities to build housing in our community, which is the main tenet of both the general plan and the zoning code update. I understand these can be difficult conversations with many varying viewpoints, and staff is most appreciative of your service to the community. I'd also, of course, like to thank city staff and our consultants for getting us to this point in the process. There have been many meetings, discussions, alternatives analyzed, and required documents completed. I am proud to call you my colleagues, and I am always in awe of your commitment to creating a new Culver City general plan and zoning code. Specifically, Advanced Planning Manager Troy Evangelow, current planning manager Emily Sednicki, Assistant City Attorney Christina Burrows, as well as all of your teams, cannot thank you enough for being such thoughtful and committed professionals. I'd also like to thank our consultants, Ramon and Associates, as well as their teams for their partnership during this process. Here's our agenda for this evening. We will begin with the discussion of General Plan 2045. As many of you know, a general plan is the city's blueprint for meeting the city's long-term vision, and the zoning code implements that vision with new standards for new land uses and zones. All of this is being done to provide more housing opportunities throughout the city. It also increases walkability and transit access, as well as creates a more sustainable community. Environmental impacts have been analyzed, resulting in both draft and final environmental impact reports, and those will be discussed this evening. As a reminder, we will need a recommendation from the planning commission tonight, and that recommendation will be forwarded to the city council at their August 26th meeting. The city council is the final decision-making body for both the general plan and the zoning code update. Finally, the city has a state of California deadline of October 15, 2024, to make the required updates to both the general plan and the zoning code in order for the city's previously adopted housing element to remain in compliance with state law. Community engagement for both the general plan and zoning code updates has been extensive. Since the project inception, there have been over 50 public meetings dedicated solely to these projects. Within the last month, the city has sent out over 38,000 postcards citywide notifying residents and businesses of the upcoming today's planning commission and city council meeting, and where to go for more project information, as well as staff contacts. This information was also sent beyond our city borders to include our neighbors and adjacent communities. Over this past summer, city staff have participated in numerous events across the community to ensure we are meeting people where they are. Events such as Juneteenth, the Summer Concert Series, Culver City Pride, the Downtown Farmer's Market, as well as the upcoming Fiesta La Viona. Previously, there were 18 general plan advisory committee meetings and 13, and 20 technical advisory committee meetings that were open for the public to participate and are available online for more information. There have also been 13 planning commission and city council meetings where general plan and zoning code updates were provided and input sought from the community. This is all in addition to required public comments periods for both the draft and final EIR, as well as for the draft general plan and the draft zoning code, and we received 446 comments in, during the draft general plan process. Again, this is a significant community-wide engagement process. However, I recognize we can do more. I will continue to challenge our staff to develop more innovative engagement processes, such as the recently placed QR code decals on several sidewalk locations in the city, as well as other social media efforts, and I ask that the community continue to provide suggestions and examples as to how we can continue to improve community engagement. I am always available for those conversations, and I can be reached at mark.munzer@culvercity.org. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Advanced Planning Manager Troy Evangelow. Troy and his team, as well as other city staff and consultants, are available for questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you. are available for questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. I'm Troy Evangelow, Advanced Planning Manager, and I'm joined with our consultant team here today. We have Eric Yurkovich and Simran Maholta from Ramean Associates, as well as Mike Harden from ESA, who helped with our environmental analysis. And we're also joined online with David Bergman, who was assisting with our fiscal impact analysis, which is in a draft, it's not complete yet, so. Thank you for joining. Good evening, Commissioners. We're moving forward from the outreach process. We developed our draft general plan. As Mark mentioned, we circulated it for public comments and received roughly five open house meetings, which were held both in-person and virtual to solicit comments on the draft general plan. In addition, we also worked on our outreach process for the zoning code update. This was initiated in 2023, and as Mark mentioned, we sent out notices both for the general plan and the zoning code developments. That was mailed to over 38,000 residents, business owners, property owners, held over 10 community meetings, events, and we had two developer outreach meetings. One was at the kickoff of the zoning code update to solicit feedback from architects, developers, to find out what their concerns were with our zoning code. And then, once we released the draft zoning code, we had another meeting with architects and developers to walk them through the different proposed changes and solicit their comments and feedback. We also sent out 88 non-conforming letters, so as we'll see later on in the presentation, there are a number of industrial, heavy industrial uses, which we are proposing to make non-conforming, and we sent notifications out to all of those businesses, both the property owners and the business owners, to inform them of this proposed change and to solicit their comments and feedback. And lastly, we did present a framework of the zoning code before the Planning Commission and the City Council. Moving on, the final general plan is what we're looking at here today. This is a 20-year plan, which sets the blueprint for the city, and it covers our goals, policies, and our implementation actions, our work plan for all of the different departments. And along with that, we're looking to, in addition, we have an annual check-in where we bring back our progress report on our general plan implementation, as well as our housing element implementation. And so, one thing we're looking to do is create an online dashboard to provide more transparency on that process, more real-time updates. The general plan itself covers 12 different elements or chapters, which we'll look at in a moment. And what's not in this version that you're seeing now is the already-adopted housing element. So that is another element or chapter of the general plan. And really, the general plan is designed to help implement the policies that are established in that housing element. One thing you'll note that's not in the general plan, there were early-on development of different policies, which the City Council chose not to include. So those items include reimagining public safety elements, as well as incremental infill policy. As mentioned, the general plan has 12 different elements. A number of these are required by the state of California, and some of them are optional. So for example, we've included governance and leadership, arts, culture, creative economy, greenhouse gas reduction, and just for people's knowledge, that is our version of a climate action plan. So when people discuss a climate action plan, our version is our greenhouse gas reduction elements. And so what I'd like to do is, rather than going through each individual element, is to jump into a couple, a few handful of elements, and give some more detail on how this document is designed and how it's intended to be used. So with that, each of the elements have a very similar setup. They both start, or all the elements start with a narrative that discusses the topic and kind of sets the scene for the policies and the implementation actions. And so the policies are designed to guide decision-making in the city. So as staff develops new regulations or new processes, we are referring to these policies in the general plan. And then also, the implementation actions are the work plan for the city. So these are the tasks that the city is assigning itself to implement over different periods of time. Again, this is a 20-year plan, so we have items that we're looking to implement short-term, within five years, five to 10 years, 10 to 20 years. So again, all of the elements have this same sort of design, with the narrative followed by the policies and the implementation actions, which are the work plan. I'd like to start with a discussion of our land use and community design element. This is one of the major talking points of the general plan, one of the main policy documents that we have. One of the main items that we're looking to do in this general plan is to create new mixed-use corridors, and not just corridors, but mixed-use neighborhoods and areas. So this achieves a number of goals. As mentioned, we are under the requirement of state housing law to produce more housing, but a mixed-use zone is not just more housing, it's opportunities for job creation as well. And so I just want to highlight that point, that oftentimes when we talk about mixed use, we focus on the housing part of it, but this is really a complete plan for the city that covers housing and commercial uses. So with that, we are also, as I mentioned, it is an implementation tool of the housing element. And this is a 20-year plan, and it does exceed the required RENA units that we have to plan for by 2029. So I just want to point that out. This plan takes sort of the long view. It looks at three RENA cycles and looks at not just how do we accommodate the housing that's required for this RENA cycle, but the next future RENA cycles, looking out 20 years. So this plan does exceed what's required in this current cycle, which is roughly halfway through. And lastly, we do have a number of special study areas, which we're looking to return and spend some more focused time and effort in community outreach, and those include the Fox Hills neighborhood and the Hayden Tract. Another element I'd like to focus on is the community health and environmental justice element. And this is also a major element that has implications throughout the general plan. One of the things it does is that identifies SB 1000 neighborhoods. This is a state requirement to identify neighborhoods that have lower income and are, have more pollution. Have our... The word escapes me, but they have more influence from pollution. So these neighborhoods, we've identified two of them that are shown here in the dark purple, and one is the Culver West and the Clarkdale Neighborhood, which is also next to the Washington Culver Neighborhood. So those darker purple areas that we've identified, those are SB 1000 neighborhoods. And what I'd also like to point out is adjacent, we have some of these lighter purple neighborhoods. Those are what we call threshold neighborhoods, so that's down in the south end by Fox Hills and also part of the Washington Culver Neighborhood. So these threshold neighborhoods are not SB 1000 neighborhoods, there is a distinction. They are, they are, they do have more exposure to pollution, but they are not lower-income neighborhoods, which does not qualify them as SB 1000 neighborhoods. So again, just wanted to make that distinction. One of the main points of identifying the SB 1000 neighborhoods is to prioritize them for investment. And so there's a number of policies throughout all of the different elements that look at SB 1000 neighborhoods, and we'll get into those in a moment. A couple other things that this element has, it does focus on developing policies to look at integrating health into the decision-making process for the city, and then to develop an action plan to implement those. Next, we'll take a quick look at the Parks and Recreation and Public Facilities element. This is, what I like to highlight first is that map. This is a map of the half-mile walk shed to get to the public parks. And what you'll notice is that there are some neighborhoods in the... It's a little difficult to see, there's a darker orange and then a lighter yellow. And the lighter yellow are residential neighborhoods located outside of that walk shed. And so one thing this document does, again, tying in those SB 1000 neighborhoods, is to look at prioritizing improvements for SB 1000 neighborhoods. We also have policies to look at improving park development along the creek, and then also a work plan item to develop a Parks Master Plan, which is actually already in process. Next, let's take a look at the mobility elements. And one of the main focuses on the mobility element is all modes of transportation, not just vehicle or transit, but really a comprehensive look across all modes of transportation. And here what I'm highlighting is our bicycle network map, and specifically, it highlights the walk shed near schools, both private and public schools. And again, following up on that theme of SB 1000, making sure that we have priority funding for improvements to SB 1000 neighborhoods. And some of the implementation actions include developing a complete streets guideline, as well as implementing projects to improve safe routes to school. Now, I'd like to switch and discuss the zoning code update. So as mentioned, both of these documents are implementation pieces for the housing element. Both the general plan helps to implement housing element policy, and then the zoning code provides more detail on development standards. And with that, there's a number of things I'd like to highlight with the zoning code update. So first off, again, following the theme of the housing elements, one of the things we're looking to do is to streamline the approval process, make it easier for housing to get built and developed, and also to update some of the requirements to be consistent with state law in regards to how projects are approved. And also, like I mentioned, the big shift to mixed use, that's reflected here in the zoning code as well. So we're going to be changing all of the commercial and industrial areas to mixed use, to allow both businesses and residential. As mentioned, one of the focuses of the zoning code update is to help streamline approvals. And with that, we're proposing to update the types of projects that can be approved at a director level, meaning administratively, and that would include projects up to 25 dwelling units. This is an increase from the previously, we had a limit of three housing units could be approved at the director level. Likewise, we're looking to be able to approve commercial projects up to 15,000 square feet at the director level, and then all density bonus projects. And just a little more background on this. When it comes to housing approvals and density bonus approvals, it's really sort of a standard checklist. There's no sort of discretion involved, and so that's part of the reason that we're looking to, again, increase the number of units that could be approved at the director level and also the density bonus projects, because those are, while they could be a discretionary process, the findings have to be objective, so it's more of a checklist-type approval. So with that, there are still projects that will be going to the Planning Commission that includes housing projects that are over 25 units and commercial projects that are over 15,000 square feet. And then also, another change that we're implementing in the approval process is to codify the community meeting program. So previously, we had a policy outside of the zoning code where developers would present to the community their projects, whether it's a housing project or a commercial project. And so through this process, we want to codify it so that the developer has one place to go. Everything is in the zoning code, and it's upfront how they go about their entitlement process. Another update to the zoning code is the focus on compatibility. And one of the items we're looking to do is to reduce the floor area ratio, that's FAR, in the single-family R1 zones. And that would be going back to a previous policy we had, where we adopted a smaller density of .45 floor area ratio for single-family neighborhoods. We had to revert back to the .65, and now through this process, we have the opportunity to, again, reduce to .45 FAR, again, looking for, reducing the size of the massing of single-family homes to be more compatible with the neighborhoods. Another update that we're doing is, along with these new mixed-use zones, we are looking to increase the heights to no more than 56 feet in these mixed-use zones. But again, considering compatibility of nearby R1 and R2, single-family and duplex neighborhoods, we're looking to have those heights step down as they meet those neighborhoods at the borders. And lastly, as I mentioned before, heavy industrial will become non-conforming. So all of our industrial zones will now become mixed-use industrial, and the difference is the heavy industrial component, manufacturing, things of that nature, would become non-conforming, so they can continue operating as established businesses, but the change comes when they stop operating that business. And again, this proposal is to allow for housing to be developed all throughout the city, so we're looking to make some of those heavier industrial uses non-conforming. And another update to the zoning code is to adopt best practices. So there's just a number of things our zoning code didn't have. You know, we didn't have electric vehicle charging stations. Some of these uses aren't new in the sense that, you know, community gardens have been around forever, townhouses have been around forever, but we don't have them in our code. So we were adding these in as new uses that we didn't have previously. We're looking to simplify our open space zone. Currently, it's multiple pages of process and approvals from Planning Director and Parks Director. And with the new Parks Master Plan coming online, we're looking to simplify the open space zoning regulations. And then also, another industry standard best practice is we're looking to establish FAR to regulate commercial development. This is something that we've included in the general plan and implementing it through the zoning code. To move on and set the stage for the environmental impact analysis, I want to briefly touch on the proposed developments throughout the year 2045. So we're proposing, or projecting, I should say, 21,600 new residents, which would be roughly 12,700 new housing units. Now, this is not a full build-out projection. This is a build-out based off of trends. So we're not analyzing the full build-out of every parcel in the city. And along with that, as I mentioned, this plan is not just housing, it's also job growth. So we're anticipating over 16,000 new jobs with over 3 million new square feet of commercial and over 300,000 square feet of new industrial. And also wanted to highlight that we do have a number of projects in the pipeline currently, so close to 3,000 new units, and 541 of them, which are, you remarked, for affordable units. So those numbers I just read off, those are what we analyzed in our program environmental impact report. And it's a program environmental impact report because this is a citywide document. We're not looking at one development of one, you know, hotel or something like that. This is a citywide, long-range plan, and so it's really an umbrella look at what we could imagine in the future, what we could project for future development. And just a quick refresher, so we did circulate a draft of this EIR. We held public input sessions, and we responded to every comment received on this environmental impact report. Most of the impacts were deemed to be less than significant, over 15 of those. There were four particular impacts, which were significant unavoidable, and that would be, as listed here, transportation, air quality, noise, historic resources. Now, we do put in place mitigation programs to help, again, mitigate those impacts. So for example, construction mitigation might be to make sure that your construction equipment is air quality certified. So we do put in place mitigations to lessen the impacts of all of the potential impacts from the project. And lastly, because we do identify significant unavoidable impacts, it doesn't mean a project can't move forward. You can still move forward with impacts, but you have to have a, what we call a statement of overriding consideration, meaning that there is either a legal or an economic or some other type of justification for going ahead with the project, and we provide those in the document. Another focus, again, on those projections is a fiscal impact analysis. This was something that City Council requested, and it is in development. We don't have it finished yet, so I didn't share any numbers. We didn't put the numbers in the staff report because it's a little premature, but it does look at our projected service population, both jobs and new residents, and it compares anticipated revenues and expenditures. And I will highlight that, you know, because, again, this document covers not... And I will highlight that, you know, because, again, this document covers not just housing, not just jobs, but the real functioning of the city, we do have an economic development element that looks to find new revenue sources as we grow and develop into the future. So it is something that we're taking into account. Next, I want to dive into a couple of discussion topics. These are things that we heard either from the community, or from the planning commission, or the city council as areas that they wanted us to circle back on and focus. So one of them is the Inglewood oil fields. And during the first presentation, the check-in with planning commission, we identified that we have two different maps. One map is the general plan map that shows the entirety of this area as open space, except for the Blair Hills neighborhood. And the other map is the zoning map, which has R1 single-family neighborhoods throughout the southern portion. And so, you know, the direction we got was to look at reconciling that discrepancy, and we did. And what we found is sort of the green parcels in between the lower R1 and the Blair Hills area, there were about four different parcels that when we dug a little deeper, we found that they actually were open space property. And one was owned by Stoneview Nature Center, and we had it as an R1 single-family residence, so that was an easy change. The other one is a pathway going from Blair, I'm sorry, Baldwin Hills lookout to the neighboring open space, so that is another open space-owned parcel. So we did redesignate the open space parcels that were owned by government agencies and were legitimate open space uses. We still identified on the southern end a number of parcels that are, you know, active oil field operations, and with those, you know, we've identified them in the general plan as a future study area where we want to engage with the public. And just a reminder that we do have a city ordinance for amortizing oil fields, as well as a settlement agreement with the owner of these oil fields. So at this stage, we thought it's something, again, to, we fixed the pieces that we could easily do, and the rest of it, we're going to look at as a future study area. Another comment we've received from the community is to take a look at the mixed-use neighborhood designation applied along Culver. And that is shown here with the red highlight on the left. I also wanted to highlight a couple of areas on Overland and Jefferson as well. So these three areas are areas which are existing multifamily neighborhoods, and we're proposing, consistent with our land use elements, to redesignate these as mixed-use neighborhood. So this was part, this came out of the community process when we developed our land use alternatives. We have heard from numerous members of the community, they've participated in our online events, and they've aired their concerns with changing to a mixed-use, and that they've preferred to keep it as a multifamily area. But again, the proposal to keep it as mixed-use neighborhood, or to change it to mixed-use neighborhood, is consistent with our land use element and with our policy to encourage retail uses, neighborhood-serving retail uses near neighborhoods. And so, again, just wanted to highlight that this is still the proposal to use, to change to mixed-use neighborhoods, consistent with our policies, but we have heard the concerns from the community. Another area of discussion is the Fox Hills neighborhood. So we've had lots of talk, lots of discussions with residents from Fox Hills, and they've aired their concerns about developments, both the density and impacts from development, parking, traffic, those types of issues. But again, coming out of the outreach and the process that we used for developing our general plan and our zoning code, we're proposing both the mixed-use high and the mixed-use medium designations in the Fox Hills neighborhood. And a couple of things to point out, this is not focused only in the neighborhood of Fox Hills, meaning we do have areas throughout the city where we have mixed-use high, areas in shopping centers, areas near downtown, so this is not a focus zoning just for the Fox Hills neighborhood. Part of the reason why we have proposed the mixed-use high is that the Fox Hills neighborhood has larger-type parcels that can accommodate this scale of development. Another concern that we've heard from the community in regards to environmental impacts is what the effect would be on ocean breezes. And this is something that's not an impact under SEQA. It's not that we didn't hear, and it's not that we're not paying attention, it's that SEQA does not consider ocean breezes as an environmental impact that should be studied. And so that is our response to that comment. And again, I wanted to point out that while this is an SB 1000 threshold neighborhood, Fox Hills is not an SB 1000 neighborhood, so it doesn't meet that criteria. And lastly, we are paying attention and having a special focus on Fox Hills, where, again, we're planning to come back for a specific plan to really get into the details on how the development should happen in Fox Hills. And also, we have our safer Fox Hills roadway redesign program underway, and so there are a lot of future planning and improvements identified for the Fox Hills neighborhood. And then lastly, I also want to point out that this proposal for mixed-use high is the proposal that we have in our adopted housing element, and there are sites in here that we've identified as housing inventory sites, and so we're being consistent with our housing element with this proposal. And lastly, I just want to touch quickly on incremental infill. This was another topic that was brought up during, recently. And this is a concept that was underdeveloped early on in the general plan, but it was not included in the draft or the final general plan, and there's a few reasons why. So I've kind of have two columns here comparing and contrasting. Incremental infill was a design concept for sort of a four-plex to be built in the single-family neighborhoods. And when we really dug into the details and looked at how we would implement it, what we found is that there's already a lot of guidance through SB 9 and ADU law, which came in after the fact. We came up with the concept of incremental infill, and then over the years, the state has changed ADU law and added SB 9, and so they kind of surpassed our original concept, and now they're the ones guiding how you can build and develop in these single-family neighborhoods. And so the original concept of incremental infill was found to be inconsistent on a number of different areas when looking at SB 9 and the ADU law. And lastly, just a couple other updates. You know, one of the things that has come to light after we released our final general plan and our final zoning code is looking at dealerships. There's a lot of interest for dealerships, and they're a very valuable resource to have in the city. And I'm talking about automotive dealerships. So we have a limited number of areas where they're permitted now, but we're also looking to expand that so that we would allow auto dealerships in the mixed-use industrial, and then also in the mixed-use medium, but with a conditional use permit, so that we could have some control on how that builds and develops. But again, these are new things that aren't in the code right now, that, again, with interest and keeping in mind both economic developments as well as housing development that we're proposing to include. And with that, that brings us to the close of the presentation, and we are looking for a recommendation from the planning commission. And this would be a recommendation to the city council to certify the program EIR, approve the general plan 2045, and approve the zoning code text and map amendments. That's the end of my presentation, and after public comment, I'd be happy to answer, or even before, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, I also have our consultant team here, both in person and online, and we welcome any comments.
So how I was hoping to do this was to have comments from the public first, and then afterward have our substantive comments and questions. But if there are, like, particular clarifying questions that need to be answered now, I would like to...
I had one clarifying question. How long on the heavy industrial do you not have to be operating for it to be legal?
If I'm not mistaken, it's a year? It's a year. So yeah, if you're not operating within a year, but there's also caveats in there. I'll have to look at the details, but yeah, it's a one-year, and you could, you know, you could change and sell it, and someone else could operate it with the same use, but as long as it's shuttered for a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I had one question. I was surprised to hear that the auto lots are a benefit to the community. Is there, like, a financial incentive there? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, without being done, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, we do, Vice Chair. We have 15 speakers registered.
15 speakers. Can we do two minutes apiece, please?
Yes. I will call out our first five speakers, so you are aware and ready. Jamie Wallace, Steve Siegel, Andrew Flores, Cindy Aragon, and Judy Sherman. I will now call Jamie Wallace.
Hello, commissioners. I haven't been at a planning commission meeting in a while. I'm even more confused, having heard what we've just been talking about, about incremental infill having been removed from the general plan, which I did notice, because I read all the way through the land use element, and I read through the zoning code, and it's not in there as it should be, gotten out. But if the housing element implement, if the zoning code and the general plan implement the housing element, and the housing element still has substantial bit of incremental infill with different densities than are in the zoning or the general plan, it's inconsistent. And it's been well over a year since the city council directed staff to take that incremental infill language out. And especially now with SB 9, the changes in ADU, it's, you know, it's not quite the same, and, but I don't get it. Why was that language never taken out? Because right now, you've got these major inconsistencies between the zoning code and the housing element, and I'm really, really worried that that is grounds for someone to come in and sue, for someone to do a developer's application, and guess what? The city has to go with whatever has the highest density, and that zoning will be stuck forever, permanently, A, B, S, B, 330. So I'm very confused about this. I was on G-PAC from the beginning, and I have read way too much of this stuff. But if that could be answered, I really would appreciate it, because I do not understand why the incremental infill was not changed well over a year ago, and now it's too short. We don't have time.
Our next speaker is Steve Siegel.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for having me. I'm happy to speak tonight. I represent 26 residents that I and others have surveyed that live on the south side of Culver, between Alenda and Sepulveda, who are requesting that we remove from the general plan a proposed change to mixed-use. We're 100% residential. Any change to commercial is a drastic change to the existing nature of our makeup of our neighborhood. We have no stores, no retail stores, no storefronts, no businesses. There's a small motel at the end near Sepulveda, but there's no commercial development on Culver. We're not a corridor like Washington or Venice. We have a character, we have a charm, we know each other, we like each other, we believe a change like that would be very, very substantial. Traffic is already gridlocked during rush hours on our section of Culver. We've seen emergency vehicles stranded in the middle of the street, happens actually frequently. Parking is now difficult to get, given the addition of only a few ADUs. So we're building density, by the way, on the street. It's happening naturally, and it's already affecting parking. It's very difficult to find parking now. We have aged and infirm people on the street. It's difficult for them to get parking as it is now. And by the way, this is only the addition of three units on our block. It changed parking substantially, because there were probably four or five cars that went into those ADUs. So in summary, we submitted a petition of our residents. We've been talking for over two years to staff. We've gone to meetings, the general plan meetings. I've personally spoken with staff, I've spoken with consultants, I've spoken with city council members and others. And the petition includes those who have, who live on the street, and nobody is in favor of mixed-use, not one person out of the 26 that we surveyed. This is all along, again, between Alenda and Sepulveda. So we really genuinely believe that since the residents are significantly, are completely opposed to it, it would be a drastic change to our neighborhood. Anyone who wants storefronts and stores can go to Jefferson, sorry, Sepulveda, or Overland, or Washington or Venice. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Andrew Flores. Andrew's not here and has not signed up. Our next speaker is Cindy Aragon. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I have been in Culver City for over 30 years and seen some of the development, and was initially suspicious of overdevelopment, but I have since reassessed and driven through Playa Vista. I drive that way on the way home, and I don't experience excessive traffic. And I also drive through the Hughes Development on the way into work. Again, I don't experience excessive traffic, because I think they planned the access to the freeways well, which Fox Hills has access to its north and southern border to the freeway, which I think would be fantastic for preventing congestion. And I just wanted to speak positively about what I think about the mixed-use and retail with housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judy Sherman.
I am a longtime resident and on board of the Fox Hill neighborhood association for many years. It is hard to imagine that after all the collaboration we have done with the city, we find ourselves disheartened by how the city came to the conclusion that Fox Hills is the prime location to accommodate most of the state's 3,341 housing assigned to Culver City. We in Fox Hills deserve better, and the general plan and zoning must be amended to reflect an equitable distribution of that amount of housing throughout Culver City. Every level of governance has known for years the problems of parking and traffic in Fox Hills, so I guess perhaps the city planners, their consultants, and elected officials thought we would not notice the 100-units-per-acre density designation on the south side of Solace, and that so far has attracted three developers, planning a total of 1,706 units, and likely more to come. Remember, the general plan has not yet been adopted yet, so changes must be made to decrease the density designation. It is no, it is no, it's not reassuring that due to the density plan for Fox Hills, that there will be a specific plan to address the prevention, to address this density. The prevention of problems is a big part of public servants, and not to create them so that they can solve them. A passage from Culver City zoning code reads, "Provisions are intended to ensure all development produces an environment of stable and desirable character that is harmonious with existing and future development, and the use and engagement and enjoyment of neighboring properties." Clearly, the planned density of 100 units per acre, not counting density bonuses, that can double that amount, is not reflected in this zoning purpose. We all know housing is needed, and certainly we are not NIMBYs, but we're also not sardines, and they are not, and there are development ops in Fox Hills, to be sure. With decreasing the density designation to 50 units per acre, we can certainly absorb some much-needed housing.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Karen Marks, Jeff Ridley, Travis Morgan, David Cairo, and Richard Zingerman. I will call Karen Marks.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I live in Fox Hills. I noticed this when I was walking to the farmer's market one day. I saw a big map, and I saw that Fox Hills was purple. And I read the emails that were sent, but they were so voluminous that I didn't see the map, I didn't notice the density that was going on in Fox Hills. And I, 100 units per acre in an area, when I look at this map, I see Heather Village, I see the areas, the condominiums and townhomes between Buckingham and Centinela. We are, we will be sandwiched between the 405 freeway and the seven-story buildings that you intend to and the seven-story buildings that you intend to put in on Uplander and on Hanum. I recognize the need for housing. This is a beautiful, flat area that can accommodate a lot of good housing. But our current structures, except for the Tik Tok building, which is against Lawson, are all two to three levels high. And that is consistent with the buildings that are in Fox Hills that we're currently living in. On this map, it looks quite small. The cemetery is stretched down to Green, to the end of Green Valley Circle here. But as you know, that's the new post office down there. It's owned by the cemetery. But there's a post office there, which also brings traffic. Traffic and parking is currently a huge problem. There are 3,000 people in this area and people come from elsewhere to use the park. I would love to see these beautiful buildings put in Fox Hills, but not in a manner that looks like New York City. Regarding other housing areas and their needs
Your time is up.
is not met here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Ritley.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I'm here speaking on behalf of my three sons. Their great-great-grandfather bought 300 acres in Baldwin Hills in 1909. That's before Culver City was started. They and the descendants of J V Vickers still own it. 38 acres of that property is in Culver City. One clarification, the city has signed an amortization agreement with SPR, the oil operator. The oil operator is not the owner of the land in Culver City. Of those 38 acres, it's a family group that has been, has owned it for more than a century. On page 115 of your land use plan, you show that 38 acres as open space. We would consider that to be a partial taking and would pursue remedies against the city if that occurs. I'd also draw to your attention that the map is disingenuous. And we've made this comment to staff. We've made it in writing through our attorney. The Inglewood Oil Field that's in the county is mineral resources. It's not open space. L.A. Community College is not open space. The Edison Substation has somehow disappeared. That's not open space. We wonder what the purpose of this map is and it's misleading. That's the second. More importantly, for the community, that 38 acres and another 16 acres is probably the last opportunity Culver City has to create single-family housing. You could create 300 to 500 units of single-family housing like in Blair Hills in that property. And I don't understand why this commission isn't focused on that.
Our next speaker is Travis Morgan.
Thank you, Commissioners. I am, I serve on the board of the largest homeowners association in Fox Hills, but I come on my own behalf. I have asked for the map to be put up on the screen during my comments of the zoning changes. Just a quick raise of hands, how many Commissioners are from Fox Hills? Okay? And only one member of the G-PAC, Freddie Puzza, was on the G-PAC. And how many events did we have in Fox Hills? Zero. This is the definition of exclusion, all right? We, Fox Hills for decades has been designated as historically excluded community because of our exclusion from the school district, from our exclusion from the other parts of this city. And now the map, which is deep purple, 85% of the deep purple is in Fox Hills. That is modern-day redlining with purple ink to put 85% of 100 units per acre in one neighborhood that is the most diverse, that has the most black and brown residents of this city, and that is the lowest socioeconomic neighborhood of this city. And an approval of this map is an approval of modern-day redlining with purple ink. There are other parts of this city that absolutely can take the same density that Fox Hills. The Jefferson Corridor, the Hayden Tract, the Costco property, there are numerous that do not abut single-family homes that can take the same density as Fox Hills. And we are the ones who are taking the brunt of this density.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Cairo.
Yes?
Go ahead, please.
Good evening. As a longtime resident of Fox Hills, my neighbors and I are very concerned about the upcoming developments in Fox Hills to add the high-density housing. These projects will lead in tremendous increase of traffic and noise pollution and exacerbate, exacerbate the already congested parking situation, making it much more difficult for residents and visitors to find parking. I will speak about the inequality of how different neighborhoods in Culver City are treated. I live in the most dense and most culturally diverse area of Culver City. The new plan puts the state require density distributions all in Fox Hills. We, there are plenty of other areas in the city, as was mentioned by the previous speaker. We demand that there is equal distribution of density throughout the cities. High-rise buildings should be built along major arteries like Sepulveda, Slauson, Jefferson, Overland, and Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Zingerman.
Can I just start in voice or do you want to have it video also?
No, it's just voice.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Well, I did speak, basically, I echo the comments I made at the beginning of the meeting. I think they all apply to the general plan that is, you know, the buildings, the large developments being not consistent with the character of the neighborhood, the lack of parking, the increase of traffic, and those have been reverberated. And also just the overall, the general sense. And I think it's worthwhile if we hear some response on why haven't we been listened to? I mean, you know, these are not the first time these comments have been made. And it's really, you know, well, this is how we're going to do it. We have to come hell or high water. We have to satisfy the state requirement. You have to do that with some thought and some sensitivity to the neighborhoods overall. And we are voters. We are trying to be active and get along, but at the end of the day, we are voters. And we feel like we're not being heard. And that's really disturbing. My parents actually bought here, parents of less memory in '78, and very happy here ever since. And I go back and forth across the two coasts and always, and plan to retire in this community, too, and have my kids and my grandkids eventually be in this area. So I think that's a really serious issue of the character of the neighborhood, the respect for the neighborhood, the feeling that we have all these kids playing soccer on the weekends. And we really feel like we shouldn't be taking the brunt of this. And I really want to understand why folks say, well, you bring up good points, but we've got to do it so you guys are going to suffer. And I'd really like to understand why there doesn't seem to be this sensitivity, why there were no hearings in the neighborhood, as we heard. You know, what is it that, you know, do we have like a mark on our back that says we can take advantage of them, so let's do it? That's very disturbing. So I'd really like to understand what's going to be done so we can be much more inclusive in this process and fair. Thank you.
Thank you. The last five speakers are Gabriela Galano, Jack Walter, Nick Maurillo, Tom O'Neill, and Kevin, I'm not sure if it's Wehi Wiki, but it's Kevin. I will call on Gabriela Galano.
Gabriela, can you hear me? Purchased a condo in 2016, my first home away from my parents. Building mixed-use buildings in Fox Hills, the most densely populated area of the city, will worsen existing issues. My area already faces traffic congestion, limited parking, and adding new commercial and residential spaces will exacerbate this problem, making commutes more frustrating and increasing pollution in an area that already abuts two freeways. The strain on infrastructure and public services like schools, healthcare, and transit could become unmanageable, degrading quality of life. Additionally, mixed-use developments could also lead to overburdened local amenities and green spaces, reducing their availability for current and potential future residents. Spreading mixed-use developments across the city would help balance growth and minimize these negative impacts, ensuring a more sustainable and equitable urban environment. I'm 35 and will be here in 20, 30, 50 years. Will my home, and the home to many others in the Fox Hills area, become unlivable? This is inequity in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Walter. Jack, can you hear me?
Good. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I've been involved in the process. I'm a stakeholder in the Culver, in the Fox Hills area. And I've been involved in the process since it started. I have been notified of every meeting. I've attended almost every meeting. I've got notifications through the mail and I've got notifications through the email. So there was no shortage of meetings, as far as I could see, and information that was provided by the planning department. I strongly support the 2004 general plan and zoning code update as they are currently being presented, and especially supportive of the mixed-use high designation in Fox Hills, which is a lightly populated area compared to the rest of the other areas in Culver City. Individual park area between Buckingham and Fox Hills is a prime area to allow high-density multifamily and mixed-use project to help meet the city's goal as outlined in the 2021 to 2029 Housing Act. Culver City hired the best consultants in the country to get the general plan and zoning code update accurately and appropriate to Culver City needs. The planning department tirelessly hired-
Jack?
Thank you.
Jack, can you hear us?
Yes.
Jack, we cannot, no longer hear you. Jack?
Yes. Yes, I'm speaking.
He's not coming through. No longer coming through. Yeah, it's very faint. Can we skip him? We will skip you, Jack, and call on the next speakers. Our next speaker is Nick Maurillo. Nick? He is not signed in and he is, does not appear to be here. Our next speaker is Tom O'Neill.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm addressing the zoning code, specifically what's stated here. More specifically, it is the purpose of this title to preserve and protect the integrity and character of the city's residential neighborhoods. I'm asking, how is this possible when 90% of the 3,300 housing units planned for Culver City are to be dumped into Fox Hills, a well-integrated and quiet community with its own character? Maintain vital areas for business activities that serve the community and protect the quality of life. How is it possible that you are serving the community of Fox Hills by increasing the population density to the tune of 100 units per acre in already the most densely populated part of Culver City? Require thoughtful planning and design that enhances the visual character and the city avoids conflicts between land uses. Have you ever seen any renderings of the projects planned for Fox Hills in relation to the existing living units and the architecture? With respect to the city's physical settings and constraints and protect and preserve its natural resources, how is it to preserve Fox Hills' natural resources by cutting down old growth trees and blocking natural airflow by allowing structures to be built seven stories high on land where the tallest structures are now two to three stories high? And to create a comprehensive and stable pattern of land uses for which public services and infrastructure can be efficiently and adequately planned? Exactly whom is the current plan for Fox Hills Plan 4? Is it to serve the existing community or the fantasy future? And I would ask finally, where do you anticipate all the people who are going to be moving into these new units going to come from? Given that there's an outmigration from California in the past year of a million people? Thank you.
Our last speaker is Kevin. Sorry, I couldn't understand your handwriting.
Okay, cool. I'm a little bit nervous, as you can tell. Cool, so I'm from Fox Hills, let's do this. Sadly, I used to be proud that my wife and I had scraped together enough money to move to Culver City and get ourselves into a smaller city where our voice would be heard and our daughter would receive a good education with a nice but not overcrowded park nearby. But little did my wife and I know that we were not moving to Culver City, but to Fox Hills, the toilet bowl of Culver City, because that is where they take their turds and dump them. Let's not beat around the bush. This new plan takes the problem that Newsom gave you and it dumps it right into our front yards instead of yours. This problem of having to get more housing without alienating the homeowners who have the time and money to get you reelected, oh, sorry. This is a win-win-lose. You have won in solving your problem of having to get more housing without alienating the homeowners who have the time and money to get you reelected. The developers have won in the thousands of units you have given them, which will profit them in the hundreds or billions of dollars. But it is the residents of Fox Hills that will have lost in this flood, not Wellspring of Development. We lose in the ways, in all the ways already mentioned by the chorus of Fox Hills residents that have spoken tonight. Now, while we don't have the time and money that the developers and single homeowners have, we do, I hope, have an ace up our sleeves. And that ace is your heart and your inherent goodness. Your heart knows what's right and wrong, what's fair and what's not fair. It knows when you are doing the right thing, no matter how hard it may be. And it knows when you are taking the cheat, no matter how easy it may be and no matter what you tell yourself in the public. As a therapist to highly successful and powerful people, I have seen what becomes of people who ignore their hearts and lose their way in the name of taking the easy road. They end up calloused and angry at themselves for selling themselves for money and misusing the power they give, they were given by the people. But I implore you, not on, not just on my daughter's behalf, but on yours, too, that you choose to do the hard thing and find a way to spread the burden of this new housing. Thanks.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers, Vice Chair.
We're going to try to get Mr. Walter back, or was that? Is he on now?
He had like a minute left.
No, that's fine. Okay, so I think the time has come for Planning Commissioners to make comments. And let's see. Start with you, Commissioner Carter.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Looks like tons of work went into this. And thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak. I was very moved to hear from everyone concerned about Fox Hills. And I think some really good points were brought up. And maybe we can delve into that more later or, or now. How, how, what's the best way, I mean, as, would you guys like to address some of the points that were brought up about Fox Hills? Or should I put it in a more of a question form?
Well, I think if you have questions for staff, you can pose them. But I'd rather not ask them sort of free-form response to what they've heard. You want to just pose them that way, I think that would work.
So what would be the best way to word this question? It is more purple in Fox Hills is, and I know that, I think you mentioned that there was, did you say there's an additional plan for Fox Hills? Do you have any more detail on that?
Yes, so we have approved in our budget and our work plan for two specific plans to take place after a potential adoption of the general plan and zoning code. That would be one specific plan for the Hayden Tract area and then another specific plan for Fox Hills. And the purpose of it is that these are transformative documents. There's, you know, lots of changes being proposed. of changes being proposed, and so these are really designed to have community-focused meetings to help develop the standards to guide building and development in these, in these areas, Hayden Track and Fox Hills. And more of a holistic view, not just looking at land use, but looking at roadway design, parks, amenities, transportation improvements, bike path improvements, the, the whole, the whole area, like a focused plan for these areas.
And that'll be part of the general plan?
That would be the next phase. So the general plan would come first with the zoning code, um, and we already have, um, you know, we've gone out through the, the RFP process, we've identified consultants, and we would have to secure and finalize that process, but it's, it's, it's queued up to go next. So after the general plan and zoning code process moves ahead, we're queued up to start immediately with the specific plan process.
Okay.
With the one caveat that we are waiting for potential grant funding, we were informed that, you know, the Fox Hills neighborhood received grant money and we're waiting for that to kind of come through, so that's something that we could look into.
Okay.
I will just add, the city will proceed with the Fox Hills specific plan if we get the additional funding from the state of California, which, as Troy mentioned, until recently was, was in flux but is now part of it, then we will add that, um, to, specifically to the Fox Hills process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I wanted to focus on one small detail also, which is the auto lots, because having auto lots, it's, as you mentioned, maybe a financial advantage, but the goals stated here don't mention income for the city. And I, and what the goals here stated in the plan are about well-being and community health and fairness and equity, and no one wants to live next to an auto park, and having one in the middle of a bustling city just is, is, um, it kills the vibe. I mean, and we see it, you know, we have one right there next to the metro, and I, is there any way to not grandfather this in?
Right, so as proposed in the current, in the proposed zoning, um, we are looking to allow auto dealerships in the areas where they're currently allowed, so usually along the corridors, and then also the, um, as you know, we have a few dealerships right near our downtown, and so those ones would be, um, allowed to, to continue into the future. Um, so those are the areas where we currently allow for dealerships, and then we're looking to move that forward and continue it. Where we were looking at sort of calibrating and, and seeing where it's appropriate is as you move up into higher-density mixed use. So as you get higher dense, density in apartments, you know, where do we draw the line of where dealerships are appropriate and where they're not? And that's where the proposal I mentioned at the end of the presentation would be to allow them in the mixed-use industrial, which, again, this isn't in the current zoning code, this is a proposed change, would be to allow it in the mixed-use industrial as that is an area that does have lighter industrial-type uses, it might be more, um, compatible. And then in the mixed-use medium to allow it through a conditional use permit process so that it would have to go through a public forum. And again, it's, there's a, a difference when you're looking at, um, housing has very strict, limited things you can, you can request of it, but commercial uses are more open to discretion. So if, you know, a dealership did want to go move forward in a mixed-use medium, um, it would come before your board for consideration, design, things like that.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Perez, comments, questions?
I had a question for staff, if you could address the comment regarding the 38-acre comment about the oil fields?
Um, yeah, let me see. I did take some notes. So, um, in our current general plan, we have the entirety of the Inglewood Oil Fields, which is the portion that's located within our city boundary. We have that designated as open space. That's consistent with the plan that's in place today. Part of a general plan also has what you call a sphere of influence, meaning areas that are outside the city that impact the city. So that would be the unincorporated portions of the oil fields and, you know, like the West Valley College, those are in our sphere of influence. And again, consistent with the general plan that's in place now, those areas are designated as open space. Now, what that means is that's our future intent if, in some way, those areas ever became incorporated and were part of the city. As it stands, the County of Los Angeles regulates those unincorporated areas however they like. They have their own zoning, their own land use. What our general plan does is it just keeps the same policy that we already have in place consistent moving forward. So it proposes open space in both the incorporated city portion and the unincorporated area. Um, and then, as I mentioned, the adjustments that we made with the zoning map, so we have two different maps, right, the general plan and the zoning, the adjustments we made in the zoning map were to be consistent with what was on the ground, so we took the R1 single-family zoning out of the areas that were really open space, the areas that were owned by Baldwin Hills Conservancy and that would have trails on them, the areas that were owned and operated as the Stoneview Nature Center, those were easy changes, they were consistent. But we have not touched, again, the, um, the other areas which are privately owned. And so, again, we're looking at those as a future study area where we could engage more with the community and stakeholders and come up with appropriate, um, process to plan for that area. So we're kind of leaving it as-is with the intention to revisit in the future.
Can I respond to that?
Um, I'm afraid we don't do that. No, no, sir. Thank you. I do want to follow up on Commissioner Perez's question, just, uh, the, the map here that we were shown on the presentation?
Yes.
Does look different than the map on 150. There's a, there's a yellow area that's missing.
Um, 150 page-
Page 115?
Of-
Of the general plan?
General plan, yes.
And the, the, the extra, the extra yellow portions don't appear on that map?
Correct, and that's the distinction I was referring to, that there is inconsistency potentially, um, I don't want to throw that word out, but it's, the general plan does show, uh, an open space, and again, that's, that's the inconsistency that, that your commission asked us to look into, where, again, we were able to fix a portion of it where it was an easy change and we could easily say, yes, this is absolutely open space. But yeah, there is a discrepancy between single-family shown on the zoning map and open space shown on the general plan map, and that consistence, inconsistency we're looking to address in a future process. Again, with the understanding that there's already settlement agreements in place, amortization ordinances, um, yeah.
I'm sorry, so, back to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I guess to me, it just sounded like there was, there actually was an opportunity to do something with private developers that maybe we missed, so I guess I'd like to further understand that in detail. I don't know if we can add that to what we're asking for, but-
And that is a, that is a work plan item for us, so this, this area that has the general plan, open space, and the zoning, single-family designation, it is our intent to revisit that, um, in a future process.
I just have a quick, a quick follow-up on this, along the same lines, which is, you, you said that you were able to change some because you saw that it was different from what is on the ground, but in the R1 section, there's no single-family homes there right now.
Yeah, the, the-
There's a different reason why we're not changing that, right?
Right, so the distinction is, the properties that we are proposing to rezone to open space are, um, one, o, o, owned by government agencies, the, the, the changes we're proposing, they're owned by, again, LA County and by the Baldwin Hills Conservancy, and secondly, they're actually operated as open space, right? So one of them is the Stoneview Nature Center and the other one is the pathway leading to the Kenneth Hawn, um, Park. So those two, when we, you know, investigated and we, we called the agencies, we talked with them, there was no reason that we, you know, they said, yes, we're, we're open space, we intend to be open space, please proceed, change it, um, which is a different situation than the properties we're proposing to keep the status quo. Those are privately-owned properties with, you know, oil operations, and so th, those ones aren't a quick, easy change. Those ones are very, you know, complex with a lot of-
Yeah.
Things to consider.
And, and I don't, I'm not suggesting that they should, that the zoning there should be oil field, but is that an, an option too? Because it is, that is what they are currently? I mean, is there, is there, is there, is there something that would be actually descriptive of what is there right now that we're not deciding not to do?
We'd have to, we'd have to look into that a little-
You don't want to answer it?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure where oil extraction falls on the list, but I, I will say that it has been addressed through the, um, amortization ordinance, right? So they've, they've built a specific ordinance that identifies that these operations are here and how they should be handled moving forward.
And I understand that there's, there are legal issues here, and I think it's, there's confusion up here, I think there's probably confusion in the public too, because there's not, I, I think you're not able to really explain everything, I don't know, it kind of seems that way. Um, just want to say, say that out loud.
Try to help.
No, I'm, I'm sorry that-
I'm not going to advocate, I'll just give facts.
I'm sorry, then, the, the public has had his opportunity to speak, and this is now for the Commissioners and the staff.
And I'll, and I'll turn it back to you, I'm sorry for that, aside.
And if, if I could jump in briefly, um, good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Christina Burrows, Assistant City Attorney. As I, I think you're all aware, as Troy has mentioned, we had our, um, our historic oil termination ordinance was adopted by a prior council. Just last year, the city and the operator entered into a, a settlement agreement that agrees to a process by which, um, the oil termination ordinance would be implemented. Um, you know, as a result of sort of these, um, different tracks between the general plan and, um, you know, discussions around oil termination, there wasn't a public process around, um, what the vision is for the, um, the Inglewood Oil Field. So what Troy is referring to now is, um, an opportunity in the future to bring in, um, the stakeholders, members of the public, owners, um, anyone who has an interest in this area, to come in and, and talk to us about what, um, what the, what people's visions are for this, for this area. Um, you know, due in part to, um, you know, not having a, uh, having that public process, there hasn't been a cohesive vision for what this, this will be, and so, based on that, um, our recommendation is to keep this area zoned as-is. It is unusual to have, um, open space, um, in our land use element and, um, single-family in our, our zoning map. But because we don't have, um, a real cohesive vision for what this should be, and because, you know, to your point, Commissioner Jones, we don't have an oil use zone that we could, um, easily apply here. Due to those factors, we would recommend leaving it as-is for now and studying this in the future.
I guess my, my one main thing that I had about the Fox Hills comments, um, and by the way, thank you, everyone, for coming out and staff, for all the hard work, um, I think my, my main concern with Fox Hills right now is it's, it's a lot of, it's a low-rise, a lot of it is a low-rise business park, and just where, where office has gone, it just feels to me that we could end up with a situation where there's a lot of vacancy, a lot of decrepit buildings that haven't been maintained, and to revitalize those buildings and create higher and denser, um, and they're not, you know, it's not incredibly dense. It just, it feels like the right thing, uh, for Culver City, um, but I do hear the parking concerns, um, and thank, thank you for coming out, I, I get that.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Um, I have, I have sort of a lot, and I'm trying to do this in the most organized fashion I can, but I'll start with some clarify, some clarifying questions. When we, uh, when we're talking about Rena, um, and Advanced Planning Manager, Evangelio, you were talking about, um, uh, how this plan is looking at a longer time horizon than the housing element was. The housing element was, was looking at this eight-year cycle that we're almost halfway through. Um, and I wanted to ask about that, um, that, the, the capacity projections are looking at what, what the, the set of sites that we chose in the housing element, and it's not necessarily an attempt to actually estimate how many are going to be eventually built. Is that right? I mean, it could, maybe it kind of is, but that's, that's not, that's, that's not exactly the way we're going at it, I'm not trying to model what's going to be developed.
Right, so let me see if I can answer your question. The, you know, yes, we're, this is a 20-year plan, right, it's a 2045 general plan, and it's looking for basically three cycles of, of regional housing needs allocation, so not just planning for this current cycle but looking for the next two. So, um, it is taking that into account, and those numbers are reflected in the projections for the build-out that was analyzed in the EIR. Now, when it comes to quantifying and showing how many units that you're producing and satisfying the requirements from the state, there's a lot of technical, um, regulations in that respect, and so, um, the state sets guidelines on, you know, sites that you identify and how many units you can claim credit for, for an accounting purpose. So there, there's kind of two different things going on. One is satisfying the state's accounting requirement for showing that you have enough density to be able to claim potential to build a certain number of units, and that's what we've done in our housing element. It, it doesn't say this is exactly the number we're going to build, it says this is what we could build in these locations, and it's very likely to hap, or it's more likely to happen because of the age of the building, um, a lot of different factors. So we have that one side, which is sort of the, the accounting, where the state has to agree and sign off on it, and then we have our general plan, which is putting that into action and allowing for that development to happen. And so, that's my long answer, I hope I, I got-
That was very-
Answered what you wanted.
And then, and then on the other side of, of the cycle, the, the state is looking at not what we zoned for, but what got built, what got permitted, what, what is it, what is it looking at?
Right, so they want us, and we do, keep an active, updated accounting of what's being built. So as you're aware, as projects build and develop, you have to take a look at your sites inventory, and if you're claiming that you're going to get 50 units from this site and you in fact get 40, there's a difference of 10 units that needs to be accounted for, and you have to go back and readjust and look that you have a capacity. So, you know, one of the things that we've done is we have built in a buffer and a capacity so that as sites build and develop, if they don't build at the full max or at the estimated, um, number of units that we've identified in our inventory, it's okay because we've identified a surplus.
Understood, okay. Um, thank you. Um, the, uh, reducing the floor area ratio to .45, I'm not necessarily opposed, but can anyone say more about why it is now allowed?
Sure. Um, so there's, and I can't tell you exactly what state law it is, but there's a, a state law that says, um, basically, we want a zero loss, that if you're going to, um, reduce housing capacity in one area, you have to compensate in another area. And so, that's why through this process, we are increasing our housing capacity, so by upzoning, if you will, and allowing more development throughout the entirety of the city, we're able to take the, the residential, single-family neighborhoods and reduce the, the floor area capacity. So basically, the single-family neighborhood buildings shrink a little bit, right? They can't be 65% of the entire lot, they're more like 45% of the entire lot, and to compensate, we're allowing, you know, higher-density mixed use throughout the entirety of the city along the corridors. The way I have explained it is everything gets taken up one click, one notch, right? All the multifamily areas are allowed to build a little more denser, all of the mixed- All of the mixed use areas are allowed to build a little denser. The, the density has increased across the board throughout the city. And by doing that, we're able to reduce the overall bulk. So it's, it's not a reduction in the number of units. You can still have your ADUs and build junior ADUs and SB9 and lot splits. So the total number of units is still allowed, that we're not reducing that. What we're reducing is the bulk of the building so that a single-family neighborhood has a slightly less bulky building. And we're able to compensate again through increases in density across the city.
That's interesting. So it is because, because other areas are being upzoned, we can, I mean, under state laws, it, it doesn't reduce density like you're saying, but it is kind of a downzoning or, or state, they say kind of looks at that, at that way in the single-family neighborhoods.
Correct, yes.
And so the fiscal impact report you mentioned, that's going to be at City Council?
Correct, yeah. We have an administrative draft of it, so I was wary to put any numbers because it's not finalized. We're close. Like I mentioned, we have the, the consultant that helped put it together. He's joined us online. And so, you know, there, there are going to be fiscal impacts. That's potentially what we're looking at. But again, we don't have the full picture. We can't explain it. The report's not done.
I wanted to ask about, and I, I hope that, so I emailed about this earlier today. In the housing element, one of the implementation steps was that in our comprehensive zoning code update, which is what we're doing right now, we would allow by right any project that has at least 20% affordable housing. And I see that there's director approval for density bonus projects, but I, I'm not sure if that's the same thing.
No, we, we did include that.
Okay.
It's, it's in, I think, the areas where we discuss findings, where there's, you know, you have to be able to make a certain number of findings to approve housing projects. But yeah, that is one of the, it's almost redundant because if you're a housing project, there's a set number of findings that, you know, you meet the zoning code, everything is objective, and if there's not a health and safety issue, you basically have to approve the housing project. So again, because the state wanted to have another caveat that all projects that have a 20% affordable are also included in, in that by right approval process, but it's again redundant because in essence, any housing project is by right approval.
Okay, thank you.
But we do have that caveat in there. We did add that language because it was requested. It was part of the housing element.
In, in the purpose section, it mentions that the, the standards for the single-family residential neighborhood were drafted to protect the existing density of the, those neighborhoods, which to me suggests, runs counter to our goal of encouraging ADU production and use of SB9 in those neighborhoods. I don't know if you, could you say something about how the standards were drafted to protect the existing density in those neighborhoods?
That language was existing. We didn't go in and reexamine the purpose of the R1 zone, so that wasn't
I see.
something that we revised.
I would, and I'll, I'll try to summarize my recommendations later, but I, I recommend getting rid of that because it, specifically that we want to have a big part of our, and you know, the housing element consistency memo or whatever that was relies on our kind of ADU production. And I, it could be misinterpreted. Along those lines, I was also thinking, you know, when I saw the slide about the differences between incremental infill and our ADU ordinance, that I guess it's a question, would state law allow us to not have a maximum size for ADUs?
I think there's certain caveats and Christina, feel free to chime in if you'd like, but I believe there's, for example, my understanding is like a junior ADU is no more than 500 square feet. So that's a limitation from the state as far as the overall size. I don't believe that we have other restrictions. There's minimum size restrictions, right? That we have to allow ADUs of minimum sizes. But if we choose to allow larger maximum sizes, I don't think that would be an issue.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I, I would be in favor of that recommendation too, of getting rid of maximum sizes for ADUs. On the, let's see. On, on auto dealerships, I'm, I'm concerned, I mean, I, I understand the point that you're making. I think that they, you know, I mean, one of the things, I don't know that there's a specific policy in the general plan about bringing in new sources of revenue, but that's important and they would do that. But I, I bet it's contrary to a bunch of other policies in the housing element about the environment. And I was actually specifically thinking that like, the Arch District and the, the metro station, Ivy Station platform feels so cut off from downtown because of those car dealerships. And if in the Hayden tract, we're trying to create a mixed-use neighborhood, I feel like car dealerships in, in that neighborhood, and I'm thinking, I'm using that as a, thinking of that as like, you know, the industrial area. I know it wasn't just mixed-use industrial where you want to allow it, but that it could, you know, just take a big chunk of that. It's a, it's a high-value use. I wouldn't be surprised if, if, if there was one built there. And it could, again, kind of make this discontinuity in like a neighborhood that already is going to be challenging to convert from what it is now into like a thriving mixed-use neighborhood. So I would, I would be against, I think, the, the proposed changes in terms of allowing new auto dealerships in those other zoning. I do, I do want to bring up again, you know, last time we talked about the general plan, we talked about zoning in MU1 and we, we made a recommendation to increase the dense, allowed density there. And I want to, I want to revitalize that plea and I'll try to do it really quickly. I have a, I sent a, a picture, a couple pictures that maybe we can bring up. I want to say that MU1 is, has I think the most frontage on a commercial corridor of any zoning. It's all along Washington. It's, it's parts of Sepulveda. It's, it's parts of, of Culver, east of Overland. And there are some, there are some large lots that could, you know, use a, so, so right now, it's, it's supposed to be zoned at 35 dwelling units an acre. There are some large lots that could have density bonus, but, but maybe 90% of the lots in, in MU1 are, are really small. And they, they, I can't get enough units to get a density bonus. But I wanted to show that actually a lot, there are a bunch of these small lots that small apartment complexes on them that would, that are more than 35 dwelling units per acre. So like this one, and let me pull up my, my numbers so I can give them. This one is, is 88 dwelling units per acre. We go to the next one. This one is, is 48 dwelling units per acre roughly. Go to the next one. This one is, is 52 dwelling units per acre. These are, these are already, you know, on the street in Culver City. These would be, these have been illegal to build for the last couple of decades and, and they would continue to be illegal to build under, under the current proposed zoning for MU1. But at the same time, on like one of these small lots, under the new zoning, you could build like a two or three-story commercial office for, potentially by right even. Whereas this, this would be totally illegal. I strongly encourage, so, so on this, on most of the frontage of, of commercial corridors in Culver City, we are not increasing the density at all with the zoning code. We're, we're codifying that you can have mixed use anywhere, which you can currently do under, under the, under the density bonus, but we're not actually adding more, more density, which, which I think is a problem, especially in light of, of the concerns of our Fox Hills residents. Now, I don't, you know, me saying that we should add more density elsewhere, I think isn't, you could argue it takes some pressure off of Fox Hills to, to handle it, but I don't think it's really addressing their concerns. But I, but I think it's relevant in light of, you know, this where we're saying all of these corridors are off limits. We're saying we don't want to encourage more density other than, you know, maybe some ADUs and, and mixed use, I mean, in, um, single-family zones. Not only that, but we want to, because we're increasing so much density in Fox Hills, we can, you know, keep McMansions out of single-family neighborhoods. It's, it's like a loophole in state law that allows us to do it. But, so one, one recommendation I would make, and I make, I'm making very strong pleas, again, that we should recommend to the city council to increase MU1 zoning, I would say to 50 dwelling units an acre, which is, which is what, what we're looking at right here. I think that the, the public comment about the woman who didn't realize what was going on, like got emails, didn't really realize what was going on until she saw a map of the farmer's market, I think is a great lesson. I mean, I think you, this, in this, in this, especially, especially in the last year, you've done a great job with community outreach. I think that, you know, I think we're seeing what works, so I'm glad you all are paying attention to that. We had a, a public commenter who said that he heard about every meeting, I think respectfully, someone who's looking to develop land in Fox Hills has a strong monetary incentive to pay attention to this stuff and residents can't necessarily, you know, pick up on it as, as easily. I, I do want to talk about Fox Hill more, more specifically. I want to ask if we could say again, or, or, I, I think that we have talked about this before, but why, why wasn't, why isn't the Jefferson Corridor and Hayden Tract, since one of the commentators mentioned those two in particular? Why, why weren't they, I mean, they are much higher density than they are now, which is, you know, no, no housing. But why aren't they being proposed for, for as high density as, say, Fox Hills is?
So, yeah, along the Jefferson Corridor, as you mentioned, we, we did significantly increase the density, right? It was, it was former industrial, light industrial area, which had zero housing allowed. And through this process, we're proposing up to 65 dwelling units per acre. So it is consistent with, you know, mixed-use medium, which is also 65 dwelling units per acre. And there's, I want to say a, a balance that goes on, not just with density, but with use, right? So these are former industrial areas and the mixed-use industrial designation sort of makes the, the heavier industrial side non-conforming, but allows for a wider range of lighter industrial type uses. And so that's a factor also, you know, versus if we were going to make this all high-density mixed-use, it could limit the types of businesses. So it's sort of a, a gentler calibration to make it, yes, adding potential for more density in these areas, but also acknowledging the history of industrial type development in these areas. So I guess that, that would be my response as to how come it ended up as a mixed-use industrial rather than a high-density mixed-use? Is it, it, it did take into account, again, having a, a balance, not, not just, you know, housing everywhere, but housing plus opportunities for business.
I'm, I'm sorry, but we do not
I'm thinking of Jefferson to, between, let's say Sepulveda and the Hayden Tract. But, um, thank you, thank you for the, for the response to the question. When, when the city, I was thinking about this, you know, after, after our, we were looking at the Haddon project, when the city collects fees for developments, like parkland and loo fees, mobility, does that go back to the neighborhood necessarily?
So those fees are put into, first off, those fees are studied and updated semi-regularly every few years. By, by law, you have to have the fee cover the impact. You have to have a nexus study to make sure that it's an accurate impact. So when you charge a park fee, a library impact fee, those ones we don't get, the school, school impact fee, library impact fee. We do get a park fee and we get traffic mitigation fees. So those are updated and calibrated and those are put into funds where it's, it really depends on the city council's decision, how, you know, and, and the directors for Public Works, how those funds are allocated and utilized.
Okay.
just a comment from the audience. We, we do not accept comments from the audience after the public comment period has closed. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. So I, I want to, I want to acknowledge again, the public commenters from Fox Hills. I, I especially was moved by Mr. Singerman who mentioned that they don't feel heard. And I, I don't, I don't blame them. Another commenter mentioned that they have been unrepresented on a lot of these bodies. They're unrepresented on this body in terms of, of having a, a member from that neighborhood. And, you know, I appreciate everything that also staff mentioned in, in your report about what the city is going to be doing to help mitigate the impact on the Fox Hills neighborhood. The specific plan, the transportation and mobility efforts. I think, I think for me, it, it does come down to the fact that, you know, this, this was in, in our, in our staff report that this, the state Housing and Community Development Department is going to look with scrutiny if we change the designation in Fox Hills. And, and that's a, that's a big deal. I mean, one of the other commentators mentioned the builder's remedy, the potentially our inability to enforce any, any limits on development. And that's, and that's a, that could be a major, a major consequence. It's not something to, to take lightly. And I know that's not going to, you know, to, to Mr. Singerman's comment, I don't think that, you know, me acknowledging that is, and giving that justification is going to make you feel any more heard or, or that, that we're taking your, your concerns into account because I think, I think my, my view on it is I feel like it is, it is the decision that has to be made is to, to approve the current designation for Fox Hills. With, with that said, I want to move on to one other thing before I, I let, before I'm done, which is not housing or zoning related, which is, I noticed that the, the guiding principle, public safety was removed since the last public draft. And I was, I was wondering, I mean, so I, my, my memory of the process is that we had some visioning and came up with a set of guiding principles. They were defined early on in the process and then those were actually used to develop the entire general plan. And even though we've, you know, deleted the reimagining public safety element, public safety was still a guiding principle, you know, as, as defined back in 2021 or whenever those guiding principles were released, was still a guiding principle that was used in drafting the, the general plan. It seems inaccurate to me to, to simply delete it as a guiding principle. Could you talk about the process of deleting it? Why that was done?
Since I've come on board with Since I've come on board with the city, we, you know, we've worked on revising the general plan and developing the elements. Yeah, I don't recall a time where we reexamine the guiding principles. Would you?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eric Kerkovich. I'm a principal at Ramian Associates. Commissioner Jones brings up a good point, that the guiding principles were drafted, I believe, back in 2020 and released for public review back in that period. One of those principles was reimagining public safety. It was a cornerstone, and safety in general was a cornerstone of the implementation of the general plan. The decision was made to remove that guiding principle after the city council asked us not to move forward with the reimagining public safety element as part of the general plan, and that guiding principle was removed from the plan itself.
But I, but that wasn't, that wasn't, the city council's direction wasn't to remove that guiding principle, I guess. I mean, and I guess would, it wasn't like the guiding principles were, I mean, pu- public safety informed other, other elements of the general plan that are still in there. And so I guess a recommendation from me there would be to put it back in. And I did want to, want to just touch on the reimagining public safety element briefly. you know, there, there, the city council set out to update our general plan. There was a list of elements that were going to be drafted. They were given to our, our consultants. We, you know, with, with the reimagining public safety element in particular, there was a survey that was answered by thousands of Culver City residents. A lot of the public worked on it and provided comment. And it, it came to city council with the message, this thing, you know, wasn't done right. It wasn't vetted. It, it, you know, it's, it's, it's surprising to me that an, an element of our general plan, you know, comes to time to look at the drafts and, and release to the public, and one of them just wasn't done with enough process to, and you had to, you had to essentially say, look, there's nothing we can do with this. Let's delete it. I, I don't know. I mean, I, has there been any, I guess, my, my question is, where is the accountability from, and I don't know if it's from staff or the consultant, to the, to the people of Culver City who, you know, through their representatives and through their work on the G-PAC, and through their work on the technical advisory committee, through their comments, through their attending of meetings, contributed to this element? And because it wasn't completed on time, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, it was available to the, the policy frameworks were available to the public for over two years, but they didn't make their way to the police department. I mean, it, it seems like all this process that resulted in this thing that, that, that so many people worked on, thousands of people wanted to see reflected in our general plan, and it was just deleted without engaging with the substance of it.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Jones. First, just, you know, for, for public notification, it wasn't just deleted. We followed the direction of the city council, who directed us to not complete the reimagining public safety element. That element, and again, it was started before my, and I believe Troy's tenure with the city, is brand new. It's not something like a land use or economic development or mobility element, where you can take a template. That had to be, you know, from the beginning, started with the consultant, based on some of the feedback that you discussed, and developed because there was nothing to, to go from. It had a different timeline for review than the other elements. Again, not a required element. And we knew that it was something that the city council and the community wanted to review. So we completed the draft of where we were at. We brought that draft to the city council, and the city council directed us not to proceed. But I don't think the characterization possibly that we perceive it exists not just in Culver City, but in multitude across the state of California.
If, if, if you knew the public wanted to review it, why wasn't it released with the rest of the general plan, as a chapter in the general plan?
I, I was not here for those conversations.
No, no, no. I mean, when, when, oh, I'm trying to remember. Were you, oh, in, in, in September of 2023, last year?
Yes.
Yeah. With the, the public draft of the general plan was released, but, but the reimagining public safety element was not released as part of it. If the public wanted to review it, why wasn't it released at that time?
We did bring it to the general plan subcommittee. So that's made up of two city council members, and we were seeking their guidance on what to do with the reimagining public safety element. And their recommendation was to bring it to city council for consideration before a general release to the public.
They, they both thought it shouldn't be released to the public?
I don't want to, actually, I don't want to say that, because they, they recommended we bring it to city council for review, which, in essence, does release it to the, to the public. So.
So, so why wasn't it, but why wasn't it released with the rest of the elements as part of the, I mean, it hadn't been, there was no direction yet to take it out of the general plan. It was still supposed to be part of the general plan at the time.
Yeah. So we do have, with the general plan and with the zoning code and, and other documents that we work on, we usually work through a few rounds of review before releasing to the public. You'll have an initial draft for staff, comments, review, circulate it, send it back to the consultant, do a second round draft, maybe even a third or a final screen check before. So we have a chance to kind of dive in, understand the content, look for accuracy, and, and kind of refine and work through the process. As you mentioned, the reimagining public safety element was on a slightly different track. It, it did not come and go through one or two rounds of, of staff-level review. It came at a point where the other elements were further along in development and getting ready to what could be released as a public draft. And so, again, it was, it was premature at that point to release it to the public, but we did, again, take it to the subcommittee for, for their input, which, again, directed us to bring it to the city council.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. So just to summarize my recommendations, because I do want to make sure those are clear. I, I recommend, and, and I, I welcome anyone else who, who, who would agree with me to support these as well, reinstate public safety as a guiding principle, as defined in the, in the public draft. Increase MU1 zoning to 50 dwelling units an acre. Remove the purpose of to protect the existing density from the zoning code. Remove maximum ADU unit sizes. And then in response to the proposal to allow auto dealerships in those other zoning designations, I would recommend not to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So Commissioner Chair Rylman, are you, are you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
The, the floor is yours, sir.
Great. So much has already been said that, you know, I wanted to say, but I do want to just echo making sure that, you know, we're hearing the, all of the residents in Culver City, including Fox Hills, and, you know, the, the comments about, you know, equity and the outreach are concerning, and I, you know, a lot of conversation has touched on that, and I just hope that we can do a better job moving forward with that. But at the same time, you know, some of the comments, you know, kind of have hyperbolic language of, you know, all of the density is being added to Fox Hills, or the corridors have no, you know, zoning for mixed use and stuff like that. And I think it's, it's important, and it's been great in this discussion, that we've kind of fleshed a lot of that out to, to talk about these other areas where, you know, more density is being added. I do support Commissioner Jones, the increase in density along those MU1, what you were showing in the pictures. And I think that goes a long way to, you know, make it more kind of inviting for development in those areas, because a lot of times, the, the density is what makes a project work for the development community. So I definitely would support that. Otherwise, I mean, a lot of what I've been thinking has been said, so I don't really have any additional comments. Vice Chairman, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair Rylman. I mean, I, I have a number, number of comments that did want to make. First, I wanted to thank, you know, staff and the consultant for what is, we are now at the end of a very long process. I mean, I think Chair Rylman was on the planning commission when this started, but I'm not sure anyone else here was.
I was.
All right. You, that was you. Other than, than Chair Rylman, I think that the, it's, it's a new planning commission. This happens, the process started during the pandemic. Actually, it started right before the pandemic, and then it was delayed. So that's many years of work. And that's many years of, of expert work, of, of technical assistance groups and other things that have done, all kinds were to make a lot of the, the judgments, decisions, and balances that come to us today. Most of what's sitting here on this map is the product of many years of thought and balance and, and talk, and many of us here, including myself, were not involved in all of that. We saw it, but we weren't involved at the same level that we are now. So I appreciate it coming here. I, I say that, I was saying that, yeah, probably if I had my brother, some of this might have looked different. Or maybe it wouldn't, because maybe if I'd been involved at that point, I would have followed along and been taken to the same place. So I want to thank you for all of I also do want to sort of comment in general that I think that, from what I've seen, job growth is part of the general plan, and I appreciate some of the elements here that are directed towards that. Also, you know, there, there was a figure that I know is going to be raised eyebrows when the public sees it in city council, and that's 21,600 new residents that are being planned for. And I, I hope we all realize that there is no mandate coming today that 21,000 people shall be, be housed here, and that will all necessarily happen. But we are preparing for the inevitability that they, that ultimately that may be required of us over the next 20 years. And I think people need to understand that this is, we are not sitting here deciding today to add that many people to Culver City, which is about a 50% increase. We are deciding to be prepared for what that density would look like, should the state require it of us, and being prepared to know what it's going to look like, and more importantly, to know what kinds of neighborhoods we're going to live in, and to have this plan for as neighborhoods, rather than have it sort of happen to us. as far as any potential changes that would be made, the, the one issue that did come to my mind, I do want to discuss with my colleagues when we get there, has to do with the south side of Culver, between Sepulveda and Elenda. I've heard from many of the residents there, almost all of them, who, they don't object essentially to the change, there's no, no real change in density. What's happening is we're adding, if I'm not mistaken, we're adding mixed use. But otherwise, the actual number of units per acre is not changing there. Is that correct? Did I get that right, Troy?
I believe so. I'd have to double-check the, but it is an existing multifamily zoning, and the density, I believe, would be 35 units per acre in the proposed, so I believe it's consistent with what's there.
When I looked at it, I, I got the sense that the only real change we were making was adding commercial possibilities to that zone. Now, so that by itself doesn't affect our revenue goals. And I think that we can leave that as a multifamily residential rather than as mixed use, without doing any violence to the plan that we have. So that will probably be my recommendation when we get there. I also want to talk about Fox New, Fox Hills, because of course we have Fox Hills people here. You know, I, I appreciate very much that people who live there are worried about the density. This is, this is natural, right? These are, when you own a home somewhere, this is your biggest investment by far, and you have an absolute right to be, shall we say, conservative with a small C, about how you view the future. But then I hear comments about redlining, and that is a very provocative accusation to a public body in a city like this. And, and I, when I hear that, I find myself wondering what's happening. Am I being asked to lower the density in Fox Hills, or are the sentiments of the people in Fox Hills being used to suggest that we spread the same density elsewhere? Is this about lowering the density in Fox Hills, or about raising densities elsewhere? Is there a, is there a sleight of hand being played here? what I'm seeing is that there is a, a desire by some to increase density in other parts of the city, and frankly, it seems playing on the, the, using words like equity suggests that, well, we'll just leave Fox Hills as it is, but make other areas have the same 100-per-unit density. I don't think that that's achieving equity. I don't think that's getting us anywhere. I have the floor, please. I'm allowed to continue speaking. So while there are some who would like to lower the density, it's clear there are others who would like to use the concerns about density as an excuse to raise density in other parts of the city, which would not, I think, have any real effect on Fox Hills at all. And I think some of the redlining language is meant to be provocative in that way. again, overall, I want to thank very much all the work that's gotten us here over all these many years. And what I'd like to do at this point, I think I need a motion to close the public hearing. I probably should have done an hour ago, but so moved.
We have a second?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, and second by Commissioner Carter. Yes, thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Berset?
Aye.
Chair Menthee?
Aye.
Chair Rylman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion closed with five ayes.
And, and what I'd like to do procedurally is if I have someone willing to make a motion to recommend all of these as is, we can then make that motion, then everything else can be considered as amendments to that motion. And we can vote them up or down as they come
I would make that motion.
And, and I'll second that motion. So we now have a motion made and seconded, which would be to specifically, I'm trying to pull up the, what we're, what we're doing. I'm sorry, the three resolutions are to approve the general plan, the zoning code map, and zoning code update, and, sorry, and the environmental impact report. Is that correct, please?
Right. It would be to recommend to the city council approval.
Of those three. All right. So that having been done, do any Commissioners have amendments they wish to make? And we can vote on those as they go.
I would like to amend that to recommend increasing the density of MU1 to 50 dwelling units per acre.
I'll second it. It's Chair Rylman.
Do we have any debate, like, place on? Do we have any debate, like take place on this motion at this time, that anybody wants to add, anything they haven't said?
I think my, my only question, we just didn't discuss, it must have been studied, you know, there's a height limit, obviously, right? I'm guessing 50 units per acre, just looking at those lots, is somewhat unfeasible? Is that right?
Yeah, we have it in the zoning code. I have to look it up to see. We have proposed height increases in a number of these mixed use zones and it corresponds to the density, up to a maximum of 56 feet. But I can check specifically if there is a height increase moving from M1 to M2. Give me a moment.
I guess my, I just want to think about the ramifications of, obviously, architects opined on this and the 35 for those lots seems, seemed appropriate. I just worry that maybe there aren't any concern, I mean, you know, increasing it to 50.
Well, so, so what, what I had shown in, in those examples is that like 90% of the, of the lots in MU1 are, are smaller, smaller lots that today, you know, from old, old zonings, have smaller, smaller apartments that are like four plexes, five plexes, that are higher than 35 dwelling units per acre. And, you know, that, to me, that shows us what density is needed to get housing built on those smaller lots and, and that it, it needs to be higher than 35 dwelling units per acre to get housing built on those smaller lots. Smaller lots that, you know, wouldn't support enough units to get any kind of density bonus anyway.
And I would add in support of Commissioner Jones, you know, those pictures shown represent a small amount of a large number of properties that look just like that all around the city in our commercial corridors. There's so many properties like that, that have those four plexes, you know, stairs up to the smaller units above that, you know, are above 35. I don't know, Commissioner Jones, if they, if you've calculated, they even get above the 50 already. Is that correct?
I mean, the ones, the ones that I showed, yeah, the ones that I showed were, I think, 188, 52 and 47. So they were already, some of those were higher than, than the 50 dwellings per acre. Does someone want to say something?
Yeah, so we looked it up. The MU1 is already at the maximum height, 56 feet, so moving to MU2 would still have the same height limit, 56 feet. It wouldn't change.
So, yeah, so I, my, my motion wouldn't change, recommend changing the height limit from what's already proposed in the zoning code. It would just be increasing the density.
And I guess my, my concern is that, what are the ramifications as it relates to unit counts and Rena, and if it's not actually feasible from like a lot, square footage perspective for a new conforming development, are we sort of over allocating? Do you know what I mean?
I don't think I follow.
I think Commissioner Brissette, to, to Commissioner Jones' point is we're already, like, these properties are already showing the feasibility. There's already existing properties that are above the 50 dwelling units per acre that are below the 56 foot height limit that would comply with a MU1 that had 50 units per dwelling.
Okay.
Per acre. Is that correct, Commissioner, Commissioner Jones? Do I have that right?
That, yes, thank you.
I mean, I will add, I am reluctant and would not support making that change because I, I feel like I'm messing with a balance of something that I did not see come together and I don't know in every part of the city where we make changes, what it would make changes for. For example, in this area between Elenda and Sepulveda, that, as mentioned earlier, we are apparently now going to increase the density for that, which we were not doing earlier. So there's a lot of changes that, that this is a large blanket change to do this.
That.
Now, maybe I can count to three and maybe that's going to be the recommendation, but and as it is 930, perhaps we could do that unless there's more, more to be said.
Just to clarify, the south side of Culver, between Elenda and Sepulveda, is not MU1. Or, I mean, there's, there's one on the corner that's MU1, but most of it's not.
Mixed use neighborhood.
Okay.
Not MU.
And my, so my, 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 just to be, to be clear, my amendment would be just apply to MU1, not mixed use neighborhood.
Vice Chair, I would just add that if, if this proceeds, that we would have to do some, some analysis as to the ramifications of increasing it to 50 dwelling, dwelling units per acre before we got to council. You know, that's going to be very cursory and quick because we have to publish that packet next week, but just as a follow-up.
That, that was my main, that was the only concern I had is the ramifications and I just, I have to trust the study that was done with architects and whatnot and it just, it seemed, yeah.
All right, well, let's take a vote on the amendment then. Unless you have comments.
Talking about amendments, can we just do it all together? I hate to approve something before we know, before we get to a final.
What we're doing is we're looking at an amendment to a motion.
If I could jump in, there would be a vote on the amendment before there would be a vote on the original motion procedurally.
Right, so what's being asked for is to essentially to call the question on Stephen Jones's amendment that would be to change the density of MU1 as part of the recommendations.
Seems like we're ready to vote on that.
I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're going to call on the question on that, so let's, let's, let's vote.
Just to make sure, I had it moved by Commissioner Brissette and second by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Menthee.
Nope, that's the main motion, we're on the amendment.
So we're going.
The amendment is by, is made by Jones and seconded, I believe, by Raman.
Correct.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so just for the record, move by Commissioner Jones, second by Chair Raman. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Nay.
Vice Chairman Menthee?
Nay.
Chair Raman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes and we have a need from Commissioner, Vice Chairman Menthee and Commissioner Jackson.
Do we have any other amendments, any, any other commissioners wish to make?
Well, Stephen listed a few that I also support. Should we package those together or Stephen, how would you like to vote on those?
Well, I'd say I'm, I'm asking for amendments from, that's what, that's what I'm doing, Commissioner Carter.
I would, I would propose amending it to, or sorry, move to amend, to recommend taking out the purpose of, quote, "to protect the existing density" from, from the zoning code.
Did you wish to package that with any, any other amendments or by itself?
I'll, I'll, I'll add to that removing maximum ADU unit sizes, which would be zoning code section 17, 400, 095, subsections, capital C.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Move by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter.
Any discussion? Commissioner, yeah. Commissioner Jones, could you just explain the first part, the, that statement?
Sure.
Where that's at? Yeah, thanks.
So in the, in the zoning code, let me go there. I may have closed it down. Oh, no, it's in notes there, okay. In, at the, near the beginning, yeah, okay, so in, in section, this is page 16 of the PDF, there's the, a purpose of residential zoning districts and each district, residential zoning district has a, has a identified purpose. And the R1 purpose says, "The standards of the R1 district are intended to protect the existing density and maintain the character of single-family residential neighborhoods." And my contention was just that we want to increase the density of R1 neighbors, we want to promote ADU. That's a, a big part of our, of, of our Rena plan is promoting ADU production and also use of SB9. And that developing, having the standards be stated as intending to protect the existing density suggests that, that, that's, that's not what we're trying to do. And, and then, and then in support of that, I think that actually removing the maximum ADU unit size for, you know, furthers that goal of, of encouraging ADU production.
Great. Thank you for clarification and well said. I'm in support of that.
Vice Chair and Commissioners, I wanted to clarify one point. The government code doesn't establish maximum ADU size. Our zoning consultant has informed me there may be a building code limitation on ADU size. So if, we don't have that on hand right now, but we will look into it and if this is a recommendation to council, we'll include that in that information.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Comments of other commissioners? If there are none, I was going to say that I, I think it's not quite accurate to say that ADUs are a major part of our meeting of Rena goals. If I remember correctly, we were getting 300 to 400 units from ADUs out of the 3,500 or 3,400 that are coming up. Sorry to do this to staff at this hour, but can you tell me roughly what, how many ADU units are in the first 3,400 Rena allocation? I remember it's a 300 to 400 number.
I know we have an analysis of this and I believe it's attachment eight where we look at the history of ADU production. I want to say it's in the range of 60 to 80 ADUs per year and it, at this point, happens to be one of our highest productions of housing in the city. But we could take a closer look.
And I would just add, add to, I think what, what I, what I was referring to was the, the letter from our housing element consultant that said, "One of the reasons it's okay that we're taking out incremental infill is because of the high ADU production." That, just to clarify what I, what I meant by that.
Well, I would oppose making the change. I don't think we need to make the change and I think that, that leaving the language as it is is actually consistent with the fact that R1 is largely staying as R1.
I would argue that there are other advantages to having a larger ADU size. It, it can, someone can do a larger ADU and increase their property value and if we limit that, then we're limiting income.
I would agree with.
Yeah.
I would agree with you as well, not necessarily on the income or whatever, but just by providing the most flexibility we can and, and the ability to build an ADU will promote more production of ADUs and thus more housing, just reducing limitations.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Also, there are people living in the, I, I built an ADU and there is someone living there and why shouldn't, if we can let them have a, a slightly better life just by tweaking one code, it makes sense to do it. It would just make all the renters' lives a little better.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? If not, let's, let's take a vote on that one. We have a, on the amendment by Jones, second was by Carter.
Carter, that's correct, yes. So how do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Nay.
Vice Chairman Menthee?
Nope.
Chair Raman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes and we have a, a need from Vice Chairman Menthee and Commissioner Brissette.
Any other amendments, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones?
I'm all, it's on, I have a list, so it, the recommend not, and I want to get it right because if you had the two zones, recommend not allowing new auto dealerships in MU Industrial and mixed use medium? Okay. I would, I would move to add that recommendation.
All right, give a second. Comments from commissioners?
I, I just, I don't really love the idea of limiting demand in our city from users who employ people and service the community, so I'm struggling with this one a little, but that's my initial comment. Let me think about it a little bit.
Commissioner Carter?
I feel strongly about this one, in part because I used to live in a neighborhood in Santa Monica that was next to all those Auto Zones and just like walking past it is, it's really isolating. And it brings down the, I mean, for residents, it would bring down the property value. And in terms of demands, it's, it's demand, but it's cars. I mean, that's not something, it's not like picking up a gallon of milk, you know, it's, it's something people buy as, as least, you know, as least often as they have to. And they can go to that place to buy them when the time comes, you know, once every five to 10 years or whatever they're doing. I just think there's so much to gain in terms of public health and flow and community that I, thank you for considering it.
Mr. Raman, Chair Raman?
Yep. I think that one, you know, to, to Commissioner Brissette's, to kind of continue the thread, you know, we can't overlook revenue for the city of Culver City that comes from these commercial uses as well. There is, you know, we're talking about adding a lot of dwelling units to the city and, you know, every new dwelling unit to the, to the city is really a draw on revenue and services in the city. And the only way we can, you know, support budgets for things that we want in the city are things like commercial uses. And, you know, even if we're not going to it very often, people go there and there's revenue flow through an auto dealership that generates tax revenue for the city of Culver City. And I think that's really important to recognize as one, one factor for this and a number of other things we're talking about, like commercial on Culver Boulevard and stuff like that, which I don't want to muddy the waters, but I live right there and I think it's, I would see it as a welcome addition that would continue some of the uses that are already in that same area. But that's beside the point, sorry.
May I ask staff, do you have on hands, could you give us an idea of ratio, like how many times more money are we talking about from an auto dealership than we would get from condos with commercial on the bottom?
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. So I, I think part of, it's very site specific, but I can tell you that revenue collection and impacts from auto dealers are significant in terms of tax revenue from the city. That's one of the reasons why we raised the question at this point. There remains significant interest in that land use, which is another reason why we raised it. And then when we have the, at least the preliminary findings from the fiscal impact analysis for the council, it will begin to show the, the revenue that we anticipate as well as the potential cost of services for the new residents that we're accommodating. So I just raised that because, you know, it's, it's definitely a land use that, that is typically very high revenue producing and, and helps us provide services to residents.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Let's call a question on that.
Can I just add one more thing? Thank you. Just that, I, well, are, are there, there are other areas where it, it would be allowed?
Yes, so it's allowed in M1, M2. Those are, again, primarily along the corridors and there's, again, the dealerships that are existing near the downtown are also, would be allowed to continue.
Right, thank you. And just- Thank you. And just, I think that if we, if Hayden becomes a vibrant mixed-use area, if there's a car dealership there, we're going to be regretting this for a long time. So that's the last thing I'll say.
All right. When the papers are moving along, let's, we have, let's call a vote, please.
Sure. So for the record, it was moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Nay.
Vice Chairman Thiem?
Nay.
Chair Roman?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion does not pass. We have three nays from Chair Roman, Vice Chairman Thiem, and Commissioner Brissette.
My, my last one, I'll move to add a recommendation to reinstate public safety as a guiding principle, as defined in the public draft. That was of the general plan that was distributed in September of last year.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Any comments from commissioners?
What, what is the kind of procedural impact of us recommending this to, to staff? Like, what, what would happen if we asked for this recommendation? It would go to council and then it would have to, how would it affect the general plan approval process?
It would go to council for their consideration and they can make the decision. It's, it's a guiding principle. It's not a development standard or a land use, so it wouldn't have any type of environmental impacts or it's something that we would have to analyze, that effect.
Okay. Thank you.
I would hope that it will inform future policy. I, I just think it's, I think that the health of the city stands on this foundation of, of safety. And I think it's going to become a bigger issue down the road, especially with the increased traffic.
And I, I would like to just quickly read it because it's very short. It just says, reimagine public safety to invest in living wage jobs, healthcare services, stable housing, and educational opportunities. Ensure public safety addresses the root causes and symptoms of crime and violence. Improve law enforcement practices like carrying out safe interactions. Ensuring independent oversight and building community trust. So I, I hope when you vote on this mo, this amendment, you can decide whether you agree with that or not.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Hearing that, I'll make my own comment, which is to say, I, I hear why policy language like that might be appealing. I also tend to agree with what the city council did in deciding that these kinds of policies are big social policies that don't necessarily belong in this document. This is primarily a land use document. And I don't feel comfortable as a planning commissioner, with my limited writ, talking about how we should reimagine public safety in this city if we should. I'll be voting no. And having said that, I'll call a question on this. Take a vote, please.
Great. For the record, it was moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Carter. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Nay.
Vice Chairman Thiem?
Nay.
Chair Roman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes and we have a nay from Vice Chairman Thiem and from Commissioner Brissette.
Any other amendments from commissioners? I'm not seeing any, any nodding heads. I can't see you, Chair.
Not from me. Yeah, I'll give you confirmation. I'm good. Thank you.
That being said, I would move, and I will move as an amendment, to change the proposed zoning for the south side of Culver Boulevard between Elinda and Sepulveda to remove the mixed-use designation and leave it as multifamily. I believe that all the residents there want to see that changed. And when I look at the justification for it, it appears to be that, yes, we do want to have some commercial, or at least have our residential neighborhoods open to some commercial activity. But this is a very residential area that just happens to be bisected by a large street. And I don't think we, I think it's right to leave that as it is. And the fact that we're not changing any housing density issues and it makes us appropriate and something that we can listen to the residents for. I'd ask that we do that. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Was Commissioner Brissette the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chairman Thiem, second by Commissioner Brissette.
Any comments from other commissioners?
I would just say, you know, I live smack dab in that neighborhood. And the vibrance and experience of the mixed-use that is on, that is literally, you know, a block and a half north on Washington is really a gem for the entire community. People walk to Millcross Coffee, to the yoga, Kid Yoga, the Credit Union, like those, all of those uses that are just as surrounded by residential as Culver Boulevard. Maybe they don't have commercial, you know, mixed-use on both sides of the street, but, you know, one side of Washington is residential, the other side is residential, once you pass the first row of properties and it's all residential through there. Very, very similar. And Culver is a boulevard and thoroughfare just like Washington. And I think linking things like the Land Day and our Dux Park Community Center, that's right on the corner of that same street, with, you know, Dear Johns and the exercise and the vet, the, and all of the stuff that's on the corner and the wine shop now on the other corner and the pottery studio and all of the stuff that's right there. I think it would be a vibrant use that would really provide more value to the people in the neighborhoods now that end up having to go further away and would probably get in their car to go further away to get a cup of coffee or something like that, or whatever the use might be. And seeing that same type of use that's in like Tilden Terrace or, or others on Culver would be of value. And I do think that it would increase residential units because, yes, it's zoned multifamily now, but the, you know, interest in redeveloping those properties is a lot smaller than it would be if there was the opportunity for it to be mixed-use. And like, so much of the housing element and other parts of the general plan and are really factors that we can do to provide opportunity and consistent and dependable development for what we want to see happen in the city. And, you know, it's not a plan that says we're going to, you know, bulldoze a bunch of houses and turn them into apartment buildings. It's, it's really providing a framework that lets private development make an investment in our city. And by letting it be mixed-use, you're providing a dependable option for redevelopment to happen there that would add value. So I'm in support of keeping it the way it is.
I, I have a question for staff, actually. Is there any concern that, because this is a kind of small number of lots and they're small lots, is there any concern that some of the older developments there might be torn down, just replaced with 100% commercial? Or, or that it could end up, you know, losing, losing housing overall? If it's more, you know, I'm, I'm trying to imagine like a tiny little apartment complex with a little coffee shop at the bottom, and I'm not really seeing that as much as like, maybe they would just do, do a little office building.
Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have to, if you're going to this neighborhood or any other neighborhood, if you remove residential units, you have to replace them at that same affordability level. So you wouldn't be able to say demo a duplex and just build a convenience store. You would have to build a convenience store with those two units replaced at the same affordability level. You could, you could go more. You could put, you know, whatever the density allows for the units, but you do have to replace in-kind any units. So it would not be just an office or a convenience store or something like that. It would be, it would have to be a mixed-use with a residential component.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, that's correct. It was a recent expansion to the replacement unit requirements of SV-8. It's a, it's a relatively new update to state law.
I, I was not aware of it. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Before we vote, I do want to, you know, thank Chair Roman for his comments. I do want to say that I think this neighborhood is different than Tilden Terrace. That's a very built-up area. Next to, there's the mosque, the former gun store. There's a lot going on over there. I think this is a very residential area and, you know, to Mr. Jones's point, perhaps we're not going to lose units there, but it does seem easier to not add any new ones and make it commercial than it is to just, what we should be doing is looking at reimagining this area and seeing, you know, some additional residential density in what is an area that's pretty residential. So I would continue to, I would urge that we pass, that we make this amendment. But that being said, call the question, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Carter?
To, to recommend that on this stretch of South Culver between Elinda and Sepulveda, instead of being designated as mixed-use, it is, remains designated as multifamily.
Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Thiem?
Aye.
Chair Roman?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion does not pass. We have a nay from Chair Roman, Commissioner Carter, and Commissioner Jones.
Are there any further amendments to be proposed? Seeing none, I think we're ready for calling the question on the general plan itself, as amended. Sorry, the recommendation to approve the general plan zoning code and the EIR as amended. We're ready for the vote.
Oh, did, I'm sorry, did you motion?
The original.
That happened at the beginning.
Oh, okay. Would you mind repeating it, please?
That's the original, original motion that was made to approve, or to recommend the approval of the general plan and the zoning code map text amendments together, the zoning code update and the environmental impact report as, as, as has been amended.
Right. It was moved by Commissioner Brissette and seconded by Vice Chairman Thiem.
I lose the screen, so then I lose track of who did it. Sorry about that. And seconded by who, I'm sorry?
Seconded by Vice Chairman Thiem.
Thank you. Apologize. For the record, now moved by Commissioner Brissette, seconded by Vice Chairman Thiem. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Thiem?
Aye.
Chair Roman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Okay. Screen just, oh. It appears to be, we have here to have no action items. Do we have any, any remaining public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Vice Chair, we do. We have seven registered to speak and those are the ones, some of the ones that were not available when we first brought it up. So I will call the first five. Nick Maurillo, Gabriela Wallano, Andrew Flores, and Michael Josephson. Our first speaker is Nick Maurillo.
These are comments on items not on the agenda.
That is correct.
Okay.
Nick does not appear to be present. Our next speaker is Gabriela Wallano. Vice Chair, how many minutes would you like to allot?
Two minutes.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriela Wallano.
These are very familiar names.
She, she was for page one.
Okay.
So a lot of people are commenting on two items. But she's no longer present. Andrew Flores? Michael Josephson? Not here as well. Paul Vowell? Next is Celest Lier? And our last speaker registered is Travis Morgan.
I have a few quick comments. Number one is on specific plans. So just as, to be aware, yes, there are future specific plans designed for both Hayden Tract and Fox Hills, but we already have four complexes with a total of 2,700 units that are ready to go as soon as this thing gets passed. So, I mean, we're, we currently have 2,500 units in Fox Hills. We're adding 2,700 units with this new thing that's a doubling of the population in Fox Hills before we even start day one on the specific plan, just so that you're aware. Okay? Number two is, I think there's a very clear distinction between dealerships and showrooms. So you can have a showroom of, you know, of a few cars and everything else can be off-site. And as long as you log that sale to that showroom, we still get the sales tax for that. And so I think that I would encourage staff to look at that distinction because there's a way less impact on these neighborhoods if it's just a 7,500 square foot showroom. Number three is this idea of discrimination, which I absolutely believe is the case. So in the Hayden Tract, they're saying we need to be able to retain what was previously there and have a more gradual transition into housing. From zero units of housing to 65 per unit, we have zero units of housing in our commercial areas that are now being upzoned to 100. That is discrimination, where you treat one neighborhood differently than another neighborhood. And the neighborhood that you're treating differently is the one that is disadvantaged. All right? So that is the definition of segregating your city and treating one area of the city differently. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last of our speakers.
All right. Thank you. Any items from staff?
I just wanted to let you know we will be meeting on the 28th. We have three items on our agenda. One is a four-unit airspace condo project. We have a three-story office building. And we have technical corrections to the Ivy Station subdivision map. So we will see you on the 28th.
Okay. Need a motion to return?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Carter. How do you vote, Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Brissette?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Thiem?
Aye.
Chair Roman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes. You, meeting is adjourned at 10:11 PM.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.